All right. Ready, Beth? All right, welcome. Call this meeting of the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District Board to order. Roll call, Beth.
Chairman Schlum.
Here.
Vice Chair Arshambo.
Here.
Board Member Dickie.
Here.
Board Member Hanson.
Here.
Board Member Cantino.
Here.
And Board Member Leger.
Here.
And Board Member Brown.
Here. All right, I want to welcome Board Member Brown to the Community Facilities District Board. I'll make a more formal greeting at our council meeting, but welcome.
Thank you.
Very good, we'll move. Any speaker cards?
Not for the call to the public.
Okay, thank you. First item is consideration of approving Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District Board meeting minutes. So move.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Chair 7-0.
Thank you. Next item, consideration resolution Eagle Mountain Community Facility District 2009-01, approving tentative budget of the district for the financial fiscal year beginning July 1, 2009, ending June 30, 2010, setting a hearing date for the budget and annual assessments. Request a motion.
So move.
How about a second?
Second.
All right. Do we have a presentation on this at all? Did we want to go over a presentation?
Julie.
I don't want to leave anybody out because I think we'll probably have a comment or question.
Thank you Chairman Schlum. Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District was formed in 1996 by the town council for the purpose of constructing infrastructure in that subdivision. The town council serves as the board for the district. The annual expenditures for the district are for repayment of the bonds that were issued for infrastructure in that subdivision. And the annual cost to repay those bonds is paid through an ad valorem or property tax collected from the property owners within the district. The levy for next fiscal year is estimated to be $1.08 per 100 of assessed valuation compared to $0.90 last fiscal year. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. So a total of $392,000 of expense and $408,000 in revenues for Eagle Mountain.
Chairman Schlum, that's correct.
Any questions of staff? Any speakers?
Yes Mayor, Bert Fisher.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Bert Fisher. I am the chairman of the finance committee of the Eagle Mountain Community Association and a resident of Eagle Mountain. I have been monitoring the financial operations of the CFD for the last five years and through the kindness of Julie Getty, I do see a copy of the budget before it's presented so I could comment thereon. You should be aware that there's a $29,460 increase this year over the prior year. The reason for that is a shortfall because of an 8 percent efficiency rate in the collection of the real estate taxes. And also a $3,500 makeup by the town because of that shortfall that we're paying back this next year and we're restoring $13,000 of the equity that was used to fund that shortfall. I should point out to you that while $0.90 to $1.08 doesn't seem like much, that's an 18.9 percent increase. However, when you factor in the announced decrease in the value of the assessed value of the properties, it's only an 11.1 percent increase, so it's not yet time to go to the rafters. We had 11 defaults in 2008 and 2009, so that accounts for 2 percent. The town says, excuse me, the assessor says there's an 8 percent shortfall. That means there's 6 percent that aren't paying their real estate taxes. They're still viable and it's strictly a matter of timing difference. The cash will come in. The assessor has a lien that takes precedence over the first mortgage. We lose our assessments. We do not take precedence over any first or second mortgage filed prior to our lien. So there's no way this money is lost, it's only a question of when you collect it. I did review the information presented by Julie, I agree with all of it. I do want to point out again that while the administrative expense was increased $3,566 to make up for the town's shortfall, that we will not have to do that again in the next year assuming the assessment, the defaults don't get either, any higher and defer any more payments. So we fully support the computations made and we thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Ms. Getty, if I could ask you a question about the $29,000 increase? Is that largely or completely due to the amount that has not been collected from those in default? Or how is that made out?
Chairman Schlum, the difference is there was $18,000 from last fiscal year, meaning fiscal year '07-'08, that was the shortfall of property taxes that were not collected and the general fund had to transfer that money over to the Eagle Mountain District to bring the balance to zero so that $18,000 is included in this next year's levy to pay that general fund back.
Okay. What do you call the board member, Arshambo?
I guess Vice Chair.
Are you?
Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Julie, so as the tax collector with his lien, as Bert pointed out, collects that money and we get it in future years, that will reduce the amount that we're going to need. We'll be applying that money as we get it and we get a surplus, we'll be applying it for this district fee so that will reduce the tax in future years. Am I correct?
Chairman Schlum, Vice Mayor, yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. I think any other questions on Eagle Mountain Community Facility District? All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the Eagle Mountain Community Facility District Resolution 2009-01 as tentative budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2009, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Chairman 7-0.
Thank you. Look for a motion to adjourn. Move or adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Call to order, meeting of the special session of the Cottonwood Maintenance District Board. Roll call, please.
Chairman Schlum.
Here.
Board Member Dickie.
Here.
Vice Chair Arshambo.
Here.
Board Member Hanson.
Here.
Board Member Brown.
Here.
Board Member Leger.
Here.
Board Member Cantino.
Here.
Any speaker cards?
No.
All right. First item is consideration of approving Cottonwood Maintenance District Board meeting minutes from June 19, '08. So move.
Second.
All right, we have a first, we have a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Chairman 7-0.
All right, thank you. Next item is consideration of resolution CMD 2009-01, approving tentative budget of the district for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2009, ending June 30, 2010, and setting a hearing date for the budget and annual assessments. Do we have a presentation? I'll do that first this time. Thank you, Ms. Getty.
Thank you Chairman Schlum, members of the board. The Cottonwoods Maintenance District was formed by the town council in June of 1999 for the purpose of improving the common area of the Cottonwood subdivision. The town council serves as the governing board for that district as well. The maintenance district provides for the maintenance of the common area which is performed by the Town of Fountain Hills. The annual cost of that is repaid through ad valorem or property taxes of the 58 property owners that live within that subdivision. The total impact of that is $3,315. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Thank you very much. May I get a motion to approve? So move.
Second.
What a second. Anyone from the public on this one?
No, Chairman.
Any questions for staff? All right, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Chairman 7-0.
Thank you very much. Look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
How about a second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. We have two minutes. Stretch your legs for a minute.
We got a minute.
About a minute on that clock. All right, for those just joining, we just had a community facility district meeting as the board of Eagle Mountain Community Facility District and Cottonwoods Maintenance District, in case you thought you were walking in on the end of our regular scheduled council meeting. No, that is just about to begin. All right.
Thank you.
All ready? All ready, Beth? All right. Ready, Beth? Ready roll. Call a regular meeting in the council order, please rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. This Pastor Paul Soderquist here from Fountain Hills Presbyterian Church. All right, welcome. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, everybody. Let us join together in prayer. Oh God, you are our life and our hope. In you we live and move and have our being. Look down upon us with your favor. Guide this city council with the counsel of your Holy Spirit. We pray for Fountain Hills resident and Arizona Diamondbacks pitcher Scott Schoenweis, following the sudden death yesterday of his dear wife Gabrielle. Bless him and the children and family with your compassionate presence. As the school year ends, God bless our students and graduates and families. Help us all to come together to express gratitude each and every day to you, God, and to love one another. Bless our service members who are away from home serving their country. Hear these our prayers in the name of Jesus Christ and in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Soderquist from Fountain Hills Presbyterian Church. Roll call, Beth.
Mayor Schlum.
Here.
Councilmember Cantino.
Here.
Councilmember Leger.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Arshambo.
Here.
And Councilmember Dickie.
Here.
All right. Excellent first announcement I just wanted to share and it should be pretty evident to those here and watching online that we are welcoming our newest council member Dennis Brown to the dais. Welcome, we wish you the best, we thank you for applying, we know you're going to do a great job.
Thank you Mayor, I will do my best. I appreciate it, thank you.
Yes sir. And I consulted with those on this side of me and figured that was the best seat for you, so.
Works best.
Hope it works for you. All right. Welcome. Expect great things. Equally important, need to mention that last week, very important birthday of our town manager was celebrated. And this week, Councilmember Leger has his birthday on the 24th. And newest council member Brown's birthday is first part next month, so. A lot of birthday parties going on here, you'll see them in their new duds next council meeting. All right, now we'll get to the scheduled public appearances. First item is I've got a proclamation to read recognizing VFW Post 7507 for conducting their annual Memorial Day poppy, Bud Poppy fundraiser on May 22nd and May 23rd, '09 for the benefit of veterans relief. And I'm going to get in trouble because I don't have my poppy on because it's on my jacket which is upstairs, so I have my poppy and you may have seen that in the Fountain Hills Times, so now I've got a proclamation to read which goes like this. Whereas America is the land of freedom preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers and whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars and now therefore I J T Schlum, Mayor of Town of Fountain Hills, Maricopa County, Arizona hereby proclaim to all citizens in our community that veterans of foreign wars, Post 7507, are commended for conducting their annual Memorial Day Buddy Poppy fundraiser on May 22nd and May 23rd, 2009 for the benefit of veterans relief. And witness whereof I heretofore set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of Town of Fountain Hills, Maricopa County, Arizona, this 14th day of May 2009. Thank you very much, BFW. And also want to remind folks that on Monday, Memorial Day, be a tremendous service as is typical, at a Memorial Day monument there in Fountain Park. I think it's nine o'clock if I remember right. Is that right Vice Mayor? Nine o'clock Memorial Day service? Nine o'clock on Monday. It's a great service, so everyone is invited to come out and attend. It's a tremendous service to pay your respects and recognize our Memorial Day here at Fountain Park at the memorial. What do we call that? Veterans Memorial, thank you. All right, next item is presentation by Dr. Kirk A. Smith, PhD, Maricopa County Vector Control regarding West Nile virus awareness.
Mayor, if I could just, for a second, just wanted to thank Dr. Smith for coming out. I know that we have been working with the Maricopa County Vector Control to develop a partnership with them. West Nile virus is a concern for all of us in our community and so he graciously accepted to give us a presentation on awareness and this partnership that we are developing. And he's working diligently with the Public Works Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Tom.
Where is that?
Did we, did we have a presentation there? We have it in front of us. Dr. Smith, welcome and thank you for.
Well, thank you for the invite. Appreciate it.
Brief presentation on vector control division workout here.
You can all see the presentation on your computers?
Yes.
Oh yeah. Well, I have to admit, I've given presentations for most of my career but never in front of a city council before, so this should be kind of interesting. I am a, one of the supervisors for.
There's the maximize button, there you go.
It is for Maricopa County. And it's always surprising when people move here that they don't realize that we have a very tremendous mosquito problem here. Mosquitoes are probably about 90 percent of what we do. We're a division of the Environmental Services Department for the county. We are vector control. We also deal with some of the riffraff problems that we have, especially in the Arcadia area as well as feral honeybees, wild honeybees throughout the county. But basically, this will be about a 15-minute presentation, just going to give you a quick summary of what it is that we do, some of the activities for 2008, what we're anticipating to see for 2009, and just a little bit about what's going on here in the Town of Fountain Hills. So this just basically summarizes what I just said, but again, we are responsible for the entire county. I have 30 people that work in the field full-time, year-round, so this is an ongoing problem that continues throughout the season. One of the services that we do provide is we do give what we call mosquito fish. This belongs to the genus Gambusia and we give these to the general public, so any of you here in the audience or any of the city council members, you're more than welcome to come down and pick these up and use them. We are by law not allowed to apply these fish in natural waterways. They will outcompete with the native fish, so we can only apply them in areas where they can be confined and for us, that's usually green pools and we'll talk about that here in a few minutes. We do a lot of educational programs, you've probably heard about some of the green pool problems that we have on television. We've been on TV a lot, we do a lot of newspaper interviews, I've been on radio a few times. We have a lot of public awareness information out there and if you feel that's something that could be utilized more here, we'd be more than happy to come out here and put together a special program for the town, so no problem there. That's access to our website, has lots of information there, what's currently going on as well as some future mosquito problems that we may be having. Vector control is divided up into basically two different components. We have a surveillance program in which we set traps throughout the county. We set over 550 traps on a weekly basis, year-round, and these are to monitor what the mosquito activity is like. For 2008, we set over 19,000 traps, just to give you an idea. And also too, this is, here is a map that shows you the location of the trapping grid that we use. We don't have a trap every square mile, but we do have them fairly extensively. We also have traps up in Wickenburg and Hila Ben and we set four here in the Town of Fountain Hills. We have a variety of other functions that we do. We have over 6,000 routine sites that continuously breed mosquitoes year-round and we visit these on a monthly basis and we have identified a few of those here in Fountain Hills. Throughout the year, we inspected over 19,000 sites and treated over 13,000 that are actively breeding for mosquitoes. And you can see some of the photographs here, some of the areas that we look at. Standing water, of course, this is where mosquitoes breed, but interesting enough, even though today it's raining, but during the dry season, this is one of our busiest time for mosquitoes and the breeding actually occurs in drains, especially in parking lots. A lot of the larger shopping malls have tremendous mosquito problems and a lot of the parking lot drains don't drain that well and the water stays in the drains and breeds mosquitoes and becomes a big issue for us. This is an area, shows you the map here of all the known breeding sites that we've identified. These are sites that routinely breed mosquitoes year-round. In a sense, we've urbanized the desert, we've created our own man-made water problems and because of that, we grew from six people in 2004, which was the year that West Nile virus got introduced in Maricopa County, and we have 50 people working right now full-time for vector control. And this shows you where our mosquito exceedances are. We have a set of values of how many mosquitoes that our traps catch and based on that value, we go out and do our fogging operations. And this kind of shows you the pattern that we see as far as where our mosquito activity is. You can see down there in the southeast corner of the county, that's where, you know, South Gilbert, Queen Creek, Chandler area, this, we still have a lot of dairy farms, we have a lot of farmland out there. When the monsoons do come in, the mosquito problem just elevates tremendously, but we do have a lot of mosquito activity scattered throughout the county. And based on that, this is what our fogging patterns look like. We fogged over 327,000 acres by truck last year, so it's a pretty major component of what we actually do. And as those blocks there on the map get a darker red color, that means we've done more fogging in that particular area. And I think we only fogged once in Fountain Hills last year fortunately, so. This is a, our complaint component of what we do, we have an entire enforcement team that gets involved with legal ramifications of mosquito breeding. They investigated over 14,000 complaints last year. Right now, we're way above that. We're anticipating we're going to receive somewhere between 18,000 and 19,000 complaints this year. Most of that has to do with foreclosed properties. The county is still averaging 200 homes a day and most of those, if they have a pool, the utilities are shut off, the pool turns green and starts breeding mosquitoes. And that's a pretty major component of what we do as far as the enforcement component of it. Last year, we looked at over 9,000 pools, most of those were breeding mosquitoes. Of those 9,000 pools, 1,500 of those were referred to legal. If the property is determined by us to be abandoned, the county attorney has given us permission to go onto that property and treat it. However, if we know that the property is managed by some owner, financial institute, whatever, then we have to go through the legal process. We post a notice on the property, we give the responsible party 48 hours to fix the problem. If not, then we issue warrants and we actually go on the property, serve the warrant with the police officer and then treat the pool. So this is a pretty major component for us. Right now, unfortunately, we're on schedule right now to look at, we're guessing about 15,000 pools this year versus 9,000 from the year before. So it's an ongoing problem, it's a big issue for us. And I'd say about 70 percent of our mosquito problem right now has to do with green pools. They just breed mosquitoes prolifically. We did some studies last year, we noticed some of the pools that breed pretty heavily can produce anywhere from 2,000 to 3,000 mosquitoes per night per pool. So that's a tremendous number of mosquitoes coming out of these pools. This is map here, shows you all the green pools that we found around the county that were breeding mosquitoes last year. The blue little human people there, that's the number of confirmed cases of West Nile virus that we had in the major metropolitan area of Maricopa County. And you can see sort of a pattern there developing where the mosquitoes are, we have West Nile virus problems. We did have 10 deaths last year associated with West Nile virus. Unfortunately, it's a disease that's kind of in the back burner now as far as the media. A lot of the insurance companies don't even pay to test for it anymore and the county health department is projecting that we probably get somewhere between 3,000 to 4,000 cases of West Nile per year in the county that just don't get tested or reported. So it can be a major problem for us. Of those 19, or of those 9,000 pools that we've looked at, we have to go back several times depending on the legal status or reinvestigation after the pool is initially treated, so we looked at over, we went back 14,000 different times to look at these pools. Unfortunately, and I'm not sure what happens here, if you have your own particular ordinances regarding green pools or how you deal with it, I know different cities have different scenarios on what they do with them, but we do not recommend just draining the pool. That creates two problems. One, the plaster to the pool is now exposed to the sun, it will usually crack and ruin the pool and have to be replastered. And two, any rain activity that we have or some kind of an irrigation event or something, we'll just put water back in the bottom of that pool and start breeding mosquitoes again. So what we do with our pools is we apply the mosquito fish, the Gambusia, and then we also use a highly refined oil that has a federal registration or label for mosquito control application and works very well. And you can stop me anytime and ask questions, I'm just rattling on. Just to give you an idea where some of the other breeding sites that we see throughout the county besides green pools, we always run into a lot of tire dumps, especially in a lot of dairy farms that have been either abandoned or sold. But fortunately, the Department of Environmental Quality has a nice program because of the rubberized asphalt program that goes throughout the state now is that they will come out and pick up tires for free, so if you run into a problem here in the town where you have tire dumps or something, they will come out, pick those up free of charge, or at least they have in the past. We see this quite a bit throughout the county. A lot of our public school systems flood irrigate their fields. Unfortunately, the fields aren't well maintained, they don't drain all that well. This happens to be one in the Kyrene School District, but it didn't matter where, but that water had been standing there for seven days. And in the summertime, that's long enough for two generations of mosquitoes to come off the water. In the summertime, mosquitoes can go from an egg to an adult in as little as three days. So unfortunately, we have public schools that are producing quite a few mosquitoes as well. And there they are, that's what the mosquito larvae look like in the water, they can be pretty nasty looking. This happens to be a golf course, but it could be any man-made small lake or pond where we got a lot of backup, you've got a lot of standing water there breeding mosquitoes. This is a pretty common scenario that we see throughout the county. A lot of the HOAs, you know, maintain their own water control basins, green belts, whatever they want to call them, and the water from the streets drains into these retention ponds and unfortunately, a lot of them aren't constructed the way they should be and so we end up getting water that just stands there like that. Or we get dry wells that don't drain properly, they just continue to fill up with water and breed over time. In fact, here's a photo. In fact, here's a photograph of a dry well right there. Dry wells are supposed to be constructed so that they drain within 48 to 72 hours, and unfortunately, our experience has been that most of them don't work as advertised. And so you shine a flashlight down there, and you see a lot of standing water inside there, and it's just breeding lots of mosquitoes. This is a common problem that we see throughout the county. This happens to be right in front of a fire station in Scottsdale, so I'm kind of picking on everybody, but this is a street drain that doesn't drain. And unfortunately for Scottsdale, they had to spend close to $1 million fixing this entire drain situation, but you know, these drains just get filled up with a lot of organic material. They're not maintained or vacuumed out the way they should, and so they back up and they're breeding mosquitoes. And unfortunately for the firemen, they had to deal with a lot of mosquitoes that were continuously biting them. Just to kind of give you an idea, again, so what we do is we have a, an enforcement division that does primarily green pools or any areas that breed mosquitoes. And then we have a whole enforced, or surveillance program where we set the traps, we do surveillance, we monitor for breeding, and we treat those breeding sites. And then based on what our traps find, then we'll go out and fog those areas. Now, what the county doesn't do is this, and this is primarily our list of things that we don't do. We don't do public schools or private schools. We leave that up to the school district. I'll come out, we'll work with them, we'll analyze the problem, we'll make suggestions on how to go about taking care of the problem, and work with the school districts that way. We don't do churches. We don't do golf courses. We don't do commercial property. We don't do gated communities. So unfortunately, we get a lot of large, expensive communities that are gated. We just can't get in there at nighttime to treat, and so we leave it up to the homeowners association to contract with a pest control company and take care of the problem themselves. And I've done a lot of educational programs to allow the pest control community, kind of bring them up to speed on the different products and suggestions on how to correct that situation. But number four is the one I just want to talk to you about here tonight, is that we don't do property that's owned and maintained by political subdivisions. And that includes city parks, city ravines, city streets. We'll do the surveillance. We'll make the recommendations. We'll do all the fogging, unless it's gated communities or a school, for instance, but we don't do the control for the immature mosquitoes, or what we call the larvae that actually breed in the water. We leave that up to the cities to take over that program. So we've worked closely with a lot of the bigger towns, you know, Phoenix, Scottsdale, Chandler, Gilbert, Glendale, take your pick. And I know Tom and I have talked about some of the problems that we see here in Fountain Hills. And just to kind of give you a little overview here, this is your high school. I don't have a pointer with me, or do I? Just a pointer?
That's it.
Ooh. Is it working?
Where is it?
I'm pushing the red button and nothing is happening.
There you go.
There is a drainage just to the, oh, there it is, right there, that's an area where we have a lot of water that comes through and is continuously breeding mosquitoes right in through there. This is another runoff coming from the town that dumps into the Indian Reservation. That area right in through there is continuously wet all the time. You know the spot, I'm sure, and breeding mosquitoes. This comes off of your lake here, and you can see that green belt that flows off to the lower right-hand corner as it flows down. That's usually wet for most of the season and is breeding mosquitoes. And this is one of your big problem areas. This is one of your larger ravine areas. The whole green belt that comes down through there dumps onto the reservation again. When water's flowing, that's a good thing, because moving water will flush the mosquitoes out of there. But when the water quits flowing, what you do have in there is you have a lot of groundwater, springs, something of that nature, that keeps coming up to the surface. And so you end up with a lot of standing water pools all up and down that small ravine area that constantly breed mosquitoes. And so we've worked with Tom and his people. What we have done in the past is, I have a gentleman who was assigned here to Fountain Hills. He comes out on a weekly basis, sets the traps, and he goes around and monitors all the breeding areas, usually every other week and something of that nature. And so what we have done in the past is when we see breeding, we will go ahead and treat those areas. But because, like everybody else, we've got budget problems and cutbacks and this and that, the county's asked us to quit doing the free treatments on property that really the city should be maintaining themselves. And so what I'm telling you basically is that we're not going to be treating these areas anymore as Maricopa County. We'll come in and do the fogging. We'll do the surveillance program, and that's kind of where we're at right now. So that's my presentation in a nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any questions or...
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Any questions? Councilmember Cantino?
I don't have a question. I got to say, I thank you. I know last year that we called you out two or three times in a certain area around the park, and your people were out right away. And I want to thank you for your prompt service and for what you're doing.
If I may, to the audience here as well, if you do have a mosquito problem or a situation with wild honeybees, our complaint number is 602-506-6616. That'll get you to Environmental Services. It's the same number that you would contact if you have a problem with wastewater or restaurants, but they will direct it to us. Right now, just to give you kind of an interesting thing, we're averaging 175 complaints a day.
Wow.
Just on mosquitoes. And we haven't hit the rainy season yet. We're busy, yeah.
Councilmember...
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, doctor.
Sure.
Speaking of complaints, we had something happen here. Somebody thought that we had quite a problem, and after reading it, it occurred to me that, and we used to call them in New York mosquito hawks, but they just look like these huge mosquitoes, but they're actually...
Yeah, we call them...
Mayflies or something?
They're actually called crane flies.
Crane flies.
Yeah. The larvae are actually, they're root feeders. They prefer to feed on grass. And I used to live up in the Seattle area, and the number-one turf grass pest up there was a crane fly. And it's interesting enough that they're becoming a bigger issue here. They don't bite. They don't suck blood. They just do their thing, and they freak people out. And another insect that we get a lot of calls on are the midges, especially with a lot of the lakes and ponds. You know, anybody here have fish in an aquarium? You can buy what they call the blood worms, the little small red worms. Those are actually midge larvae. Again, they don't bite. They don't drink blood or anything of that nature, but because they're kind of the same size of a mosquito, we get a lot of calls on those too, so...
Sure.
And just one other question. There's a bill that has to do with nuisance abatement. Have you heard about that?
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that is helpful to you? I know right now, nothing's really moving, but it seemed to me that it had something to do with your ability to access property if you needed to.
We are the only, we're not a true mosquito abatement program per se, because we're part of Environmental Services, but we're the only mosquito control program in the United States that doesn't have the legal authority to go on property and treat whenever we want to. So the county attorney has decided that he has to protect people's rights, and you know, that's his opinion, so we have to go through the legal process. Last year, we served 950 warrants, I believe, because we had people that didn't want to cooperate with us on the property, so...
Yeah, and maybe this will be something that'll help, because I think it's also for any other kind of environmental or hazard or something like that.
Some of the county lawyers were, I know, instrumental in helping to draft some of that new statute change, and so I hope it goes through, because it would... What's hard for us is we're not law enforcement officers. So for us to serve a warrant, we have to contact the sheriff or one of the local police departments and wait for one of those people to come out and serve the warrant with us, so...
Thank you. Quickly, Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Doctor, could you repeat again, how is it you come out and help us? You're not going to help us treat the problem. Do you provide us the...
We'll continue to do the surveillance, let you know of any mosquito breeding problems that you might have. If the area needs to be fogged, we'll do the fogging, because no one's really set up to do that. But we are asking you to, you know, take care of the mosquito breeding on your...
The breeding area.
On our, on the properties that you're responsible for.
On our properties. As far as residential properties, you'll still continue to go about those.
Oh, okay. And I know there's some licensing issue that I think Tom's people have to go through from the state in order to get licensed to apply pesticides, and you know, more than willing to come out and provide all the training, anything that we have to do, so...
Good. Thank you very much, Dr. Smith.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Have a good night. Thanks for coming out. Next presentation is Dr. Ken Strobeck. Dr. Ken, from the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, to talk to us about revenue sharing. Welcome, Ken.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you for inviting me out tonight. This is a very important topic, obviously, for every city and town budget in all the 90 cities across the entire state, and I'm here to tell you it's a moving target by the hour, depending on what's going on at the legislature. As Councilmember Dickey mentioned a minute ago, bills are not moving in the Senate. Some of them are moving in the House, but President Burns said at the beginning of the session this year that he was not going to hear any non-budget bills until after the budget was approved. So here we are, late May, after the session started in January. Tomorrow, I believe, is the 131st day of the session, and there has not been substantive bills that have even been heard in the Senate yet. So it's all been focused on the budget. They're continuing to focus on the budget. And I'll talk about some of the bills that moved out of the House and also out of the Senate yesterday in just a moment, but since the agenda item was on shared revenue, I thought I'd just give you a very brief update on that. We sent out our state shared revenue estimates back in March, and so far, with our formula distributions for sales tax and income tax, nothing has changed from this estimate that we sent out in March. Now, that's sort of good news and bad news. The good news is it hasn't changed. The bad news is the estimates for sales tax are down 15% because of the collections just being down, so that's the projection for next year. And the estimates for income tax are down 13 and 1/2%, which represents almost $100 million decline from the amount of revenue sharing and the income tax side that was distributed last year. And again, that is calculated on a two-year lag basis, so we know that that number is fixed, because that was the collections that occurred two years ago. The leadership in both the House and the Senate have said that they do not plan to attack shared revenue and balancing the budget, so we've so far not seen any of those specific proposals in any of the budget bills. And I think part of that is because of the fact that they attempted to do that last year with the $17 million grab, and we sued them over it, took it to the State Supreme Court and won that case, and have called their attention continuously to the fact that Proposition 108 requires a 2/3 vote for any change in statutory distribution of money to cities and towns that benefits the general fund. And so far, there have not been any proposals to actually do that, because they know they'd never be able to get 2/3 vote. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to hand out a couple of pieces, if I can, that I brought. These two items have to do with impact fees, and this is a topic that I know Mr. McGuire has spent many, many hours with us working on. The Home Builders Association are making a very strong attempt to change the impact fee statutes and also to basically eliminate impact fees. That's their ultimate goal. And so they put out a piece a short while ago, actually a couple of months ago, that was a PowerPoint that said that there was almost $600 million just sitting on shelves in cities and towns that was in impact fees that was unused, and that the state could just use that money to balance their budget. That is not the case, and it's, we, the piece that, one of the pieces we're handing out is something that we produced called Myth Versus Fact, where we take each one of the slides that the Home Builders Association put out, and we counter that with the truth and the actual information about impact fees. And they have been telling a number of legislators that cities and towns use impact fees to balance their budgets, and they shift funds around and use them improperly and those kinds of things. We don't. We can't. It's illegal, and I know that you don't do that. But what that has resulted in is a belief that somehow impact fees could be used by the state to balance their budget. And we saw that first in the House budget that came out a couple of weeks ago, specifically in, let's see, it was House... Yeah, House Bill 2635, that says that the development impact fees could be used by a city or town for general fund purposes. They would just simply change the law and say, you don't have to use that for infrastructure anymore. You can use that for general fund purposes. And then if a city or town did in fact do that, then they would be on the hook to pay a proportional share of $210 million to the state general fund. Now, the $210 million, I think, was just a random number picked to fill a budget hole, but you know, there's all kinds of problems with this whole scenario. For example, if you had, even if you did have, say, three, four, five, $10 million on the shelf, and you said, great, we get to use that for general government purposes, you would have immediately obligated yourself to pay whatever the town's share of that $210 million would be to the state. It might be even more than what you took out of the impact fee fund. Secondly, you would have to, at some point, pay back that impact fee fund, because you collected it for specific infrastructure, and there are contractual and other obligations that you have met for that. And thirdly, why would you use that as general fund flexible money when that's what revenue sharing money is already? It would be like swapping out flexible money for other flexible money that comes with two or three strings attached. So it just doesn't make any sense. And furthermore, what it would do, if any city ever even thought about doing this, it would empower the home builders to come along and say, see, you didn't need that money for infrastructure after all, therefore, let's repeal the impact fee statutes and just get rid of it once and for all. So it's a very bad idea. It did pass out of the House Appropriations Committee, as we expect all those bills that go through the Appropriations Committee do. But again, what people have said about these bills is, oh, this is just a starting point. This is just so that we can move something out, so we can get negotiations going. And of course, the leadership has been negotiating with Governor Brewer to try to come up with a budget, and they haven't been able to agree on anything yet. Anyhow, the House moved that bill about two weeks ago, and then yesterday, the Senate Appropriations Committee moved some of their bills. And some of them, there was a package of 10 bills. Some of them were very similar to the provisions of the House bills. But again, what was different in the Senate were two very unnerving provisions. One was in Senate Bill 1036, and that one said that one of our revenue sharing funds is the vehicle license tax. It's been in place since 1956, when that tax was initiated, and the concept back then was all government, all levels of government are impacted by highways and roads and cars, so a portion of the VLT will go to counties, a portion will go to the cities and towns, and a portion will go to the state. Well, you know, 50 years later, the policymakers at the state have come to believe that that is their money and that it's only generously shared back with local governments, rather than believing that it's a tax in general, that a portion goes to each one of the levels of government. But the VLT is, again, flexible general fund money that doesn't come with any strings attached for your local budgets. What Senate Bill 1036 says is that $84 million of the VLT tax that's distributed to cities and towns, and that represents about 42% of the total, has to be transferred by the city or town to the local school district in your city, based on a calculation that the county treasurer will come up in each of the 15 counties. Now, we have no responsibility, obligation, operational authority, or anything to do with the operation of school districts. And furthermore, this appears to be just a, somebody's clever way of trying to get around a Proposition 108, because if they simply said this $84 million would go to the general fund, that would be a Prop 108 that would require a 2/3 vote. But by sort of doing this laundering business, by saying, well, we're going to go ahead and give you this revenue sharing fund, but then you have to give it to the school districts, the thinking is that people are saying, well, that's not a direct benefit to the state general fund, because it's going to the school districts. Well, of course, that is a general fund obligation that is basically being supplanted and replaced by this $84 million in local revenue. Again, this passed out of the Senate Committee, and it's one of those ideas that probably will not survive the negotiations, but again, it's troubling that something like this even comes up as a concept, because that would be a significant hit to every one of us. Then there was an amendment that was introduced on that. Let me also give you the numbers just for Fountain Hills. It would be a reduction of $393,000 in your vehicle license tax proceeds, leaving a balance of $534,000 for the next fiscal year. So, you know, $400,000 bucks, it's not insignificant. There was an amendment to this bill that was passed last night, again, that said, well, cities and towns could take impact fees and backfill this $84 million. But again, as I said, there is no impact fee... But again, as I said, there is no impact fees to backfill. Now, to the last item, Senate Bill 1035, an amendment emerged late yesterday afternoon, about 3:00 o'clock, that was an amendment to the Strike Everything Amendment that was adopted. And this was just handwritten by the home builders. In fact, they testified on the, in the committee last night, went very late last night. And what this does is make some major changes to the entire impact fee statutes. And Andrew, I know we've spent hours negotiating on this, and this came out of total left field with not one minute's worth of consultation with any city or town. Basically, what it does is it eliminates a lot of other, a lot of categories for impact fees and says the only thing that they can be used for are police stations, fire stations, roads, and water and sewer projects. That's it. No police cars, no fire trucks, no furnishings, no parks, no anything else, only the, only that limited number of items. So that would mean that everybody else in town would have to pick up the cost of that, you know, furnishings and other kind of vehicles that would supply the operational ability for those things to function correctly. It would also, and this is the most troubling part, a number of other provisions, but it would put a total moratorium on the collection of impact fees for a three-year period. So that means zero impact fees being collected. Now, the home builders argued, and that's the other thing that I passed out, is that single sheet, they've put up a website that says, "We need to get rid of impact fees in order to stimulate jobs." Well, everybody agrees that it would be great to have jobs come back and have the economy be going, but the last thing in the world we need right now is a few thousand more homes being built when we have thousands of them sitting empty and 15,000 pools that have mosquitoes growing in them. And so their argument last night was very circular, when they said, "Well, we've got to have this reduction in impact fees because impact fees are what's causing people to not buy homes, not the market." But then they were asked, "Well, if you got the reduction in impact fees, would you go back to building homes?" No, not until the market comes back, which is another four or five years. So it basically is, again, revealing what their ultimate goal is, which is to just eliminate impact fees entirely and have all the costs of infrastructure for new development be borne by existing taxpayers. And our longstanding principle of impact fees in the state has been that growth pays for itself. That's why you have to have the Infrastructure Improvements Plan and have to have a study done that allocates how much of that infrastructure is attributable to new growth and so forth. And it's very precise, and it's a huge project to even get one of those passed. It takes nearly a year in terms of the timeline to finally pass one. Just late today, there've been a couple of other developments on this front. Chairman Pierce was quoted, and in fact, he gave a reporter a statement that, when the reporter said, "Well, this, you know, the league is complaining that this will mean that other residents will have to pick up impact fees, you know, the cost of infrastructure." And he said to this reporter that, "No, though, this is only a moratorium on increases in impact fees. They can still collect the impact fees." However, that is not what the bill says, and that is certainly not what the Home Builders Association intended. So we'll be watching this unfold. Now, as I said, all of these things are things to be worried about and be concerned about and to contact your representatives and senator about, but they're not finalized by any means. There's still a long ways to go in this process and a lot of negotiation to occur, and so I wouldn't get too overly stressed at this point, but just be aware and be concerned and know that there are these proposals out there. Obviously, they're having to deal with a multi-billion dollar shortfall at the state level. There's still a significant tug of war going on between the legislative leadership and the governor's plan, who's, you know, the governor's called for a billion dollars in a tax of some sort to help backfill that $3 billion, and the leadership in the House and the Senate has said they don't want to do that, and they want to get there all with cuts. So that's really what the big struggle is over right now. So they're trying all these other alternative ideas before they come to some final resolution with the governor. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ken, for keeping us informed coming down tonight. As far as revenue shares go, if the state brings in less revenues, they would, in fact, be paying the towns and cities less revenue. Correct, that's the percentage of the overall revenue that's brought into the state?
Mr. Mayor, in both income and sales tax, that's true. You won't see the impact of the income tax for two years, but you do see the impact of the sales tax on a month-to-month basis. And so, you know, we're down 15%, they're down 15% as well.
Is it typical that the legislature would somewhat pit cities and towns against school districts and pit cities and towns against, what was the other one? They were home builders, I think?
Well, yes. We've had these longstanding conflicts with the home builders, where, again, they have come in year after year. For the last four years in a row, we have spent hours across the table with them negotiating what they say are reforms needed in the impact fee process, but they have successfully convinced some members of the legislature that it's only impact fees and regulations that are stalling out the building and jobs, and they've made a very strong case that this is a way to get jobs going again. So, yes, we're in a continual battle with them. It's almost the first time that I am aware of that we've ever been pitted directly against education. You know, there's always this struggle about, well, how much is going to be funded for education, and if they didn't put as much in some other funds, HERF fund or something, could there be more for education? But to have this kind of direct cops versus kids scenario put out is something that is brand-new. And we haven't had time yet to get legal analysis on that, but as I said, it seems pretty flimsy if that were to stand in some sort of a final bill, that that wouldn't be a Prop. 108 violation.
Appreciate it. Any quick comments or questions, please, Mayor?
Thank you. Ken, could you explain to the council what the $250 million, there was a tax the legislature put on, on a three-year hiatus and supposed to start kicking back in next year? And now I'm hearing proposals that they want to make it a permanent cut? If they're seeing such a downturn in the economy, why would you want to do something like that?
Right. That was a $250 million, it's the county equalization tax, and that basically is a tax on property across the state that goes to school districts. And three years ago, when the state had a billion-dollar surplus, that tax was suspended, according to the actual statute that enacted that. And so it hasn't been collected for three years. It's scheduled to come back online next year. There's vigorous discussion and arguments about this last night in the Senate Appropriations Committee, where some members said, "Well, this was never intended to be a permanent tax. It was only when we had this good economy that it was intended to be gone temporarily." Others said, "No, it was always supposed to be a permanent repeal and that we had to put suspension in order to get it passed to Governor Napolitano. That was the only thing she would sign at the time." So there's this, there's this argument back and forth. It's primarily, as I understand it, something that businesses pay, then utilities would pay, so it's a, it's a property tax reduction, or it would be a continuation of the reduction that they got three years ago if they were to make the repeal of the tax permanent. Otherwise, it would come back online and produce about $250 million.
I think for the average homeowner, that just seems like an oxymoron. They're sitting there claiming poor, and then they've got a tax that they can collect that's supposed to go back into effect, and they're getting rid of it, which aggravates the situation.
You know, this is all part of, tied up with what a lot of people are asking for is some sort of tax reform. They're saying we have to have, you know, fundamental tax reform and change the whole property tax system, the whole income tax system, the whole sales tax system. So there are some people that are very, very committed to that, including some of the leadership.
Okay. Thanks, Ken. House Member Legay.
Ken, I'd like to personally thank you for your leadership, as well as the work that your team does. I don't think people realize that living municipalities, how devastating it would be to any municipal budget, particularly our budget, if any of these bills that are being tossed about become a reality. I mean, we've, we've gone from a general fund budget last year from 16, 16 million, down to 14 million, and we're still cutting. If any one of these things kicked in, it would be quite debilitating. So we certainly appreciate what you do. Unfortunately, as a community, we are overly dependent on state shared revenue, as you may well know. I'm not necessarily a proponent of property tax, but we do not have a property tax, primary property tax to offset downturns in the economy, particularly what we're experiencing. And then to lose VLT or impact fees, as you all know, is crucial. So thank you to yourself for your leadership, as well as your team. It's much appreciated.
Thank you very much, and we're certainly aware of that. And, you know, that's one of the arguments that we do make to the legislature is when they say, "Well, we're down, you know, this amount of money." We say, "Well, that's because we're down the exact same amount of money. We're not living in an alternate universe. This is, this is where sales tax and where all the other income taxes, et cetera, are generated." So we are very acutely aware of the economic situation at the state, and we're very different from counties and from school districts because we don't depend on the state as our primary source of operational revenue. That primarily comes from our own local revenue sources. Mr. Mayor, I did want to mention one other thing that I thought was interesting. This was in the legislative report yesterday when we were talking about this option of the VLT swap-out in the Senate bill. You want, your representative, Mr. Kavanaugh, this is, quote, "Told our reporter, 'An alternative would be to leave the cities alone, take half the VLT intended for counties, and then take enough HERF funds to get the $190 million they need.'" So, you know, it's still in play. Everything is up in the air, nothing filed yet, but that was a comment that Mr. Kavanaugh made.
House Member.
Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Ken, and as someone who sees you down there and hears what you say, I, we really, really appreciate that you represent cities and towns. And it's important for our residents, our current residents, to understand the ramifications of the things that you're saying, development fees particularly. That is obviously for development to pay somewhat for itself on its impact on our town. So if you're a resident who's lived here for a long time, this definitely affects you. The idea that they're going to enact any of these things without raising taxes, which is really what they don't want to go anywhere near, is, it's really just a way of shifting that burden because from preliminary discussions, even of our own school districts here, and again, school districts who had more than 4% of a carryover, indeed, used that money to lower their tax rate because it is illegal for them to use it, and just as we were not allowed and do not use development fees for improper expenses, school districts do not do that either. So the fact is, I don't feel that taking that, I do feel that taking money that would have lowered a tax rate is indeed something that's detrimental to our current sitting residents. And it's important for people to realize that this council and any council can raise sales tax. If we had a $400,000 hit, that would, really would be a very devastating, we've been so good, Julie and our leadership has been so good about keeping us above water throughout this entire challenging time, that, but something like that just kind of takes you over the top, which is something all the state agencies are going through, too. One other thing I wanted to mention is that there are a couple bills out there that also impose mandated costs on cities and towns. If they do go through, there's one that would require us to allow vehicles, to allow people to keep weapons in them, and if you did not want that, then you had to take all of these steps that would cost money and resources and time, and that does include public buildings. And then the other one, which is 2615, which is supposed to be a bill that is for transparency, indeed, and I haven't even had a chance to ask our folks, but I know other cities are seeing hundreds of thousands of dollars of impact if they do have to do that, which in essence is to put all of their books online, and sometimes it was going to be through ADOA, sometimes it wasn't, but whatever. So this stuff is still in play, which brings to the point that they can be influenced. We can, we can let these lawmakers see that they have real, real ramifications to people who are struggling and doing their best to get through this right now. So we certainly appreciate that, and I would just say, you know, town Fountain Hills, pay attention, and because we, I think we do have a voice, and we, and we appreciate you giving us the guidance on what the message can be.
Thank you.
Thank you. The fact is, you mentioned the, our legislators, Senator, they are available, they are accessible, they are tabbed, so make sure you, and they are pulled in a lot of different directions and get a lot of different information, and things can move quickly in the darkness of night.
Right.
And I think they do their best, and I think I've lifted them up for being available and accessible and hearing our concerns, and they have a lot to deal with, as you mentioned, on the onset. But thanks again for the update. I know we spent more time on this than we suspected, but there are a lot of things that are brewing right now, and thanks again for keeping us in the loop.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. That is our last public appearance for tonight. We'll move now to call to the public. Do we have any speaker cards, Beth?
Not for the call, sir.
All right. Thank you. Now, look to the consent agenda. Request a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
So moved.
How about a second? Second. All right. Roll call, please, Beth.
Councilmember Cantino?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Legay?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Schlum?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shamo?
Aye.
Mayor 70?
Thank you very much. First item on the regular agenda is consideration of accepting a sculpture titled Quackers, paid for by a private donor titled Quackers, and approving the placement of this piece. Mark, is the donor actually named Quackers, as I read?
Actually, not the donor, but the piece itself.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Welcome, Mark. Thanks. While you're doing that, I'll, assuming we accept this, would make, I'd like to thank the donor for contributing the dollars to purchase the piece by Mike Dwyer that we saw the other, I think, the prior meeting. Where are you looking to place this piece, Mark?
This particular map that I have in front of you here shows the actual location of that piece. It's different, and I wanted to call that to your attention from what was proposed the last time. And it's located a little bit closer to where the playground equipment and the splash park is at. It was the feeling of the Public Art Committee that they wanted to reconsider the location of the piece so that it was a little closer to where some of the children were at.
Anything else, Mark?
The other thing that changes, you touched on a minute ago, is that the particular piece was originally going to be purchased through the Towns 1% Public Art Fund, but as you mentioned, we did have a donor through the Public Art Committee step forward, and so that piece is now being donated to Town rather than being purchased through the 1% fund.
Again, we've got some tremendously generous people in our community, and thank you once again for contributing to our Town, and this time through Public Art. So Quackers will be appreciated by everyone there at the Fountain Park, especially the kids there by the splash pad. So a nice, nice addition, and appreciate the work of the Public Art Committee and the commission for considering placement. All right. Do we have a motion yet?
Mayor.
I don't have a motion.
I vote for a nomination and revise placement location of the piece titled Quackers.
All right. Excellent. A second?
Second.
Anyone from the public on this piece?
Yes, Mayor, we have two cards, Jerry Miles and then Jerry Kirkendall.
Thank you very much. Mr. Miles, former Mayor Miles, welcome.
Just very briefly, since June 1st of last year, this is the 12th piece of public art to come before this community, financed in a number of different ways. The fact that this piece was paid for by a private donor reflects the fact that our community is behind this. This is the second time that somebody has read an article in the paper, picked up the phone and called and said, "We'd like to pay for this piece." So we have planned for years with the hope that this will be a major visitor, attraction to our community. We have over 60 pieces of public art now, and we're getting there. Thank you very much for your support on this. Thank you.
Mr. Kirkendall.
Jerry Kirkendall. This being donated, I think, you know, that's probably a very good thing. I just wanted to bring the thing up because, and the paper has said we're paying $3,500 or something, or $3,000, I don't know, whatever, but people are still upset about buying sculptures, you know, for $25,000, $100,000. It's one reason they're never going to approve our property taxes, something we might need, because you're afraid of how the money is going to be going. And I think that we need something like a public swimming pool for the kids more than this type of stuff that is donated. That's a different story. But I just wanted to bring that up to be real careful what we're doing. You've got a lot of very agitated people about these sculptures from the past, which is one reason they're not going to vote for things that we need. is one reason they're not going to vote for things that we need, is they're afraid the money is not going in ways it should be going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkendall. Mark?
I'm not sure if you have anything top of mind, but I believe if it's not 95% plus, it's close to that as far as the number of art pieces that have been donated or paid for through the Public Art Fund, which is specifically through construction that's set aside for public art, which is a new way of funding relatively. Can you speak to, I think that's one of the greatest myths that's out there, is that the Town buys all this art.
That's very much correct. I'm sure it frustrates many of you, just as it does me, that for some reason the word, and the rumor continues to get spread that somehow the Town is using public funds from the taxpayers to do this. And as you know, and hopefully increasingly the folks in the audience here, as the general public will understand, is that the council, through the urging of the Public Art Committee, has set aside a fund specifically for that purpose, to purchase and install public art. So, when I come forward to you with pieces, they're typically coming to you with two directions. One is a donated piece, such as the one tonight, and then a piece that would be purchased through the 1% Public Art Fund. As the gentleman alluded to earlier, originally the proposal was to pay for it out of 1% fund, not out of the public general fund. So, I want to make that distinction very clear, but as this gentleman spoke a minute ago, there's still that misconception out there. And I don't know how we can, can get the word out any better than we have, but we'll continue to try to get that information out to folks so that they fully understand. Again, it can only come forward two ways. One is either a donated piece, like this one was tonight, or through the 1% Public Art Fund, which is not from the general fund. It's money specifically collected for the purchase and installation of public art, not the general fund.
Now, Mark, the public art fund's a year old or so.
Correct.
The, up until this point, I believe, there are pieces that the Town did purchase, one, for example, or two, are right here on our grounds.
Correct.
That we did purchase in conjunction with the building of our Town Hall. So, there are, there is art that the Town has purchased, but is it, is it close to say that approximately 95% of the public art that's here in our community was donated by individuals through their graciousness?
I think that's a very fair statement, and if the council desires, I could certainly put that information together and get it to you as well as make it available to the public.
All right.
Might help dissuade some of the misinformation that's out there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. We got a motion and a second, any other comments, questions? All right, and we do, we do pay the insurance, I know, as well, and often the installation is covered by donors as well. So, again, most appreciated, the sculpture titled Quackers for addition to our fountain park. We got a motion and a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor 7-0?
All right, thank you. Item number five, consideration of hillside protection easement abandonment for 15305 East Sundown. Welcome, Gene.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. This is a request to consider the abandonment of a hillside protection easement on a residential lot, case number HPE 09-01. Property is located in Sunridge Canyon, parcel I. It is lot 38 at 15305 East Sundown Drive. It currently is undeveloped. The lot area is 17,375 square feet and includes 2,400 square feet of HPE. Note that 1,739.67 square feet of that 2,400 is requested to be abandoned. The HP is located at the rear of the property. The final plat for the property and the parcel was approved by the Town Council on October 16, 1997, and was recorded with Miracopa County on December 5, 1997. In your package, Exhibit A, from the applicant's engineer, showing the portion of the HPE that they are requesting the Town to abandon. The HPE is this strip here, 20-foot strip at the rear of the property, and the part that the applicant is asking to abandon is this portion here, which is 1,739 square This slide shows a part of the recorded plat that defines the grant of perpetual easement to the Town of Fountain Hills. The easement is to preserve the natural photography and vegetation. It does not allow the property owner to disturb the easement without prior Town Council approval. This aerial shows the applicant's lot alongside neighboring properties. Property is lot 38 down here. There's a 20-foot easement line, the dashed line at the bottom, that's the 20-foot easement that we talked about. And you can see clearly how the neighbors have developed and honored that easement. The applicant plans to build a home on the property. The plans indicate that the home would not encroach on the HPE. Also on the plans is a pool, as well as landscaping and retaining walls that would encroach on the HPE. The applicant's letter of request indicates that he wishes to use this additional HPE to, and quote, "Enjoy Arizona natural beauty and outdoors," unquote, and that the approval of this request would be adding to the aesthetics and value of the neighborhood. As one of the Town members is disabled, they wish to enlarge the outdoor area. And here's a copy of the letter, which is in your packet from the applicant. And here's a copy of the preliminary site plan. So, note that the pool and the spa, planters, the retaining walls are encroaching on the Staff reviewed the Town Council minutes and the events leading up to the final plat. We know that the Town has one, has one of its priorities and goals to preserve the natural landscape. That is seen through many avenues, including disturbance ordinances, HPE, and the strategic plan. Existing homes in parcel I of Sunridge Canyon have all honored the HPs on the properties. The Sunridge Canyon Homeowners Association supports the preservation, and the Architectural Review Committee has denied their plans as outlined here. Furthermore, your package is correspondence with the association reinforcing their position to preserve the HPE lands. Finally, staff's research indicates that in parcel I, the homegrown plan has over 500 square feet more of livable area than the average home in parcel I. Here's the area of most of parcel I, and again, you can note the undeveloped strip along the, the rear of the properties on both sides of Sundown. Staff's recommendation is to deny the request to abandon the 1,739.67 square feet of HPE. And the Sunridge Canyon Community Association said in their correspondence to me that they do not approve of the Town considering allowing any owner on Sundown to begin disturbing these planted HPE areas. With that, staff suggests the following motion, move to deny the hillside protection easement abandonment for 15305 East Sundown Drive at Sunridge Canyon parcel I lot 38, case HPE 09-01. Thank you, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. The applicant's son is here, would like to have the opportunity to say a few words to the council on behalf of his parents' application.
Good, absolutely. Welcome. Thank you, Gene. Come on forward to the microphone, if you don't mind.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Very good.
You know, it's, myself, my wife, and my son live at 16540 East Alago. My parents are planning to relocate out here with their retirement. When they first purchased this property over 10 years ago, it wasn't, they weren't planning on building such a large home. What happened the last couple of years, my aunt suffered a, she's suffering from Parkinson's. She needs a full-time caregiver. My parents care for her and don't have the energy to do it themselves anymore. So, their plan, when they relocate out here, is to have a full-time living caregiver do it for them. When, a couple of things I wanted to say was when I first spoke to, I met with the Homeowners Association, Sunridge Canyon, and when I first spoke to them, they, they said that in a formal letter, they were going to deny it, but the only reason they were going to is not exactly that they were against it, but that they were going to leave it up to city council to decide. So, that's, that's why I'm here today. Otherwise, I probably wouldn't have even pursued it, and I know my parents wouldn't have either, because, you know, if Homeowners Association doesn't want to go, I know that city council probably would not support it either. The plan was just to allow my aunt, you know, she, she probably doesn't have too much time left, and my parents wanted to build a home that would accommodate her and a, you know, it's going to have an elevator, a large outdoor area, gardening was always her hobby. So, that's what they're trying to do for her in her last several years. It wasn't for me, I'm disabled too, but that's a different, you know, automobile accident, I'm not going to live there. You know, they're, they're anxious to move out here. They're, you know, as soon as construction would be completed, they would be moving out here with my aunt and acquiring, hopefully, a full-time living caregiver, and, and that's why we're making this request. That's, that's it. They were never intending on building such a large home on that property. They, you know, it would be, you know, in their view, they want to accommodate my aunt, but on the other hand, you know, they, they won't be able to do it in a smaller home. So, their plans are, if, if we can't get it passed, that they'll possibly, hopefully, sell this property and buy somewhere else here in Fountain Hills, because they like Fountain Hills. So, they want to relocate here. And, you know, a lot of our family is intending, I already have an aunt and uncle out here, my wife, myself, my son have just relocated out here not too long ago. And so, a lot of us are coming out here, and that's basically my request. I'm, I'm hoping that you guys grant it.
Well, thank you very much.
But, thank you.
That's very nice of you to come out on behalf of your parents and your aunt. What was your name again?
Andre Schrocka.
Schrocka, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
And I think you made a good case, and I appreciate it. Obviously, the correspondence from the Homeowners Association certainly read that they did not wish to have this occur.
They didn't, and then the other thing that I did show that, you know, I, I know you see a good shot of it in the aerial view, but I presented a picture to the package which shows, you know, there is 150 feet, and I know that this, you know, the HPE is a touchy subject, but I, you know, there's 150 feet plus, and I, I'm being very, you know, modest in saying 150 feet of hillside beyond, where we don't encroach on anybody else's property or really take over the hillside at all. But, thank you.
Good, thank you. Any questions for staff, or I'll call you the applicant? Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, looking for a motion from council? Let's see here, looking for the, here. Gene, all right. I'll move to deny hillside protection easement, HPE abandonment for 15305 East Sundown Drive at Sunridge Canyon parcel I lot 38, case HPE 09-01. Do we have a second? All right, discussion? Council, discussion, questions? Councilmember Hanson?
Gene, who technically owns that, that HPE?
Folks. Andrew?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, it is a dedication of the Town, much like any of the other easements, like public utility easements or otherwise. So, the fee title earth underneath, it's owned by the property owner, but it's encumbered by the hillside protection easement.
Thanks. And since the mayor stepped away for a few seconds, I'm in charge. Everybody put your hats on? Oh. Any other questions, the council? Henry?
What, what percentage of the HPE are they going to encroach upon in the proposed plan?
There's 1,739 square feet of 2,400, so that's...
73%?
Roughly, yeah.
Okay.
And that's roughly 17, 10% of the total property.
Okay. And you've had an opportunity to speak with the Committee of Architecture and that community, as well as the board, and both of them are opposed to, to approving the encroachment on the HP, is that correct?
Yeah, I communicated with the, not with the Architectural Committee, but with the, the Manager Association, and also with a member from the board, which is in your packet. Did not talk directly to the...
There is a, there is a notice from the Architect Committee in your packet denying the...
Yes.
Okay, very good. And with respect to that particular neighborhood, it appears from the photographs that you provided us, that the majority of those lots are built out on that particular street. And just looking at the photograph, it appears that everyone has complied with restricting their building from the HPE. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, councilmember Legay, that's true, yes.
Okay. So, in essence, approving this would, could have an adverse effect on those folks that have built within, within the restrictions?
Yes, that's staff's opinion, as well as in the correspondence with the association, they indicated similar issue.
Okay. And just a question for our town attorney, Vice Mayor, if I may. Andrew, are there any implications here for Prop 207, one way or the other?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, I can't imagine that there would be any implications from Prop 207, because the land is currently encumbered by the HPE, so whatever value it has today would only go up if you remove the HPE.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Gene. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other questions, comments? Got a motion and a second? And this is for denial, correct?
Ready to vote?
Yeah, motion, the motion is to deny.
Did you get a second?
Yes. All right, all in favor of denial indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Mayor 7-0?
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
And welcome to Fountain Hills, too, because you're new as well.
Yep, thank you.
All right, next item, presentation by Swaback Partners in consideration of the Town's financial participation in funding phases three, four, and five of the Swaback Proposal of January 2009 for a master plan of the Town's downtown area in an amount not to exceed $39,176. Mr. Town Manager Rick?
Yes.
You have a presentation for us.
Mayor, council, as we discussed in a work meeting previously, we're here to consider the possible participation of the Town in a master planning process of our downtown area. Herefore, the, the Business Vitality Advisory Commission, under the direction of the chamber, has been working with Swaback Partners in order to form this plan. My understanding is phases one and two have been completed, and your consideration tonight is regarding and specific to the Town's participation in phases three, four, and five. And with that, we have, we're honored to have John Barnhart and Vern Swaback of Swaback Partners with us here today to share a public presentation with regard to the results of some of the concepts, principles, and ideas that have emerged from this process up to this point, and look forward to your consideration of the proposal to continue this, this very worthwhile project. With that, I'll turn the time over to Mr. Swaback.
All right, Mr. Swaback, welcome to Fountain Hills.
Thank you, I've been here before.
I hope you found it all right. And I know you're familiar with Fountain Hills, and I first want to thank the chamber for getting this started, and their funding of that as well, and I appreciate you coming down tonight.
Thank you, pleasure to be here. I can't possibly do justice to the many, many hours and meetings that we've already had, showing images, but I would like to give a brief overview in the interest of time, and I was told to be brief, so I'll do my best. Our process is simply one of working from the broadest generalities that we can, down to whatever detail, level of detail seems pertinent, especially in the pursuit of things that might happen, happen sooner or happen better with the visioning process, with the master planning process. We make drawings, and we've made many of them, not only to explore on our own, but to use them to inspire discussion and feedback from the various constituents, both in the chamber, the government officials, and the general public, which we've been doing since our March 12 agreement was signed. We produce literally hundreds of drawings and photographs, some out of the archives of our own past work, and some made specifically for Fountain Hills. And the, we're really, actually, task three is well underway, and it'll be completed soon, but most of those drawings have been for reasons of illustrating possibilities or not, we try to keep feasibility and visioning in different camps, because we're showing things that we are not asserting should be done that way, nor do we wish for anyone else to assert they should or shouldn't be done, other than as, as just dialogue. to assert they should or shouldn't be done, other than as just dialogue. We've referred to analogous communities. No two cities are alike. We don't presume to put some sort of preconceived plan on top of the Fountain Hills downtown opportunity, but there is something to be learned by looking at these other examples, lessons learned, mistakes made, sometimes achievements, and surprises and so forth. So we've shared that with everyone. We've looked into the historical record of what the town has been through during the last 40 years, some of which we were pleased to participate in. We started with an aerial photograph to sort of get a 30,000-foot view of everything, and then work that into components. For example, this is a pedestrian study, and where are there good pedestrian linkages? Where are they challenging? Where might we want some that don't exist today? And then these four circles, each represent a 1,000-foot radius, which is about a five-minute walk. And what you see is that the downtown area is quite dispersed, it's quite large, and we're not likely to create an environment in which one is walking throughout this whole area, throughout the whole study area. This is the same thing for just traffic arteries going from minor neighborhood streets to arterials and having some comment about on-street parking, which we've done some extensive study for. The other precedents we've looked at are just to take the size of the designated downtown area, which is shown here in the red dots, and compare it to, for example, other downtowns. Again, there's no magic, there's no formula that says that this tells us anything, other than that it's a very large area and you know these other downtown areas, so you see the notion of maybe a desire for some more compactness, especially if we're talking about the residential scale. Here we are with compact development, which relates to an integrated mixed uses of residential, retail, office space, as well as what can the street do to enhance? You know, people walk where it's pleasant to walk. I mean, they'll walk great distances where it's pleasant, almost not at all where it isn't. And we've actually have test cases where somebody can be walking along a street where there are show windows and it's pretty, and they get to maybe a bank or something that's dark at night and they'll turn around and go back. So it's kind of like an orchestration. The whole idea with trellises or planting that separates the walking experience from parked cars, how enticing are the window displays? And then right down to the branding, the, I know you're studying branding, but even in the independent commercial stores, how we would like to use some effort to make signs almost more decorative than just informational, as well as destination, places that maybe are almost like anchor tenants and so forth. And the objective of all of this is not to say that any one of these things is more important than the other, but it's to do dozens of things with great care. And then we know that Fountain Hills, like many communities, can't really exist on your own population base, and you have the festivals and the art walk and the various things that have a wonderful potential. There should be more of an inviting atmosphere for visitors who want to come and shop or spend the day around the lake or whatever. And so that's a matter of attracting people from outside the community. But the kind of win-win, which we absolutely know for certain, is that the places that all of us want to visit most are those that are working well for the people who are already there. Otherwise, you're just going to Disneyland where you're with other tourists, rather than visiting a place that's working well. We then, these, the three maps here, they relate to a lot of perspective renderings, but there's simply like three levels of this one being minimum impact, moderate impact, and then a more major impact. These are all, and they're all within reason. I mean, we're not turning something into some sort of major urban center with high-rise buildings. These are all things that could happen, but there are also kind of variations on when is enough enough and how far does one go with the vision without losing relevance somehow. I would conclude with two observations, one rather specific and one rather general. And that is, the March 12 agreement has five tasks. We're well into task three. The way it's been put together, we've made drawings, we've shown things as how they might appear eventually, but they've really been for purposes of stimulating conversation. So the way our agreement is set up, the way our tasks are set up, is we don't produce a conclusion, if you will, until task five. So it's all part of a cloth. I know there's been some division as to who funds what, who authorizes what, but at the level of an idea, it's all one thing. The other, just listening to you tonight, I thought about the difficulty of visioning process. It's creating an urgency for something which hasn't really changed much for 40 years and for which the outcome won't change very much very quickly. And so how do you create an urgency for something like that? But it's extremely essential to do. Otherwise, we all spend all of our time dealing with problems, and then you become sort of a hit-and-miss target for somebody who comes into town and wants to do something, or maybe not enough people come into town to consider it because there isn't sufficient magnetism to show that the town has been thinking, the town has something in mind, the town has ways in which it can influence what happens. So the whole notion of a visioning process is to give some guidance to either the pace of development or the quality of development that might not otherwise occur if you're just waiting for random accretion to come and knock on your door. I thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'm going to defer them to my partner.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Swaback, Mr. Bernard, thanks for coming in tonight. I know you didn't have a long trip, being a resident here. I, again, appreciate the chamber already getting this started and establishing a good working team, as well as a, what's your, what's the other group called? Focus group, great focus group. And then, of course, you already have one public presentation that was very well attended. Heard very good comments, had a couple of concerns, of course, but I think that's going to be consistent with a visioning or anything that might ultimately resemble something changing. I think the, you know, we've, we had our work study last week, and some of the council members are relatively new to what's been going on, although Fountain Hills Times has been doing a good job reporting on what's been progressing with the chamber's leadership on this item. Let me just set the tone for our discussions here. I'm frankly very pleased that Swaback was interested in our community. If those that aren't aware of your standing in the, in this field is probably amongst the best in the world, so I appreciate your interest in our community. This is, as far as timing, we don't have a lot of building going on, we don't have a lot going on, we have a budget that's in decline. It's a time where everybody's forced to pause, and I think that's exactly the right time to consider things such as this, visioning, including inwardly looking at a variety of different things. And our town staff's been doing a good job with that internally, looking at our structure, making some adjustments. We've already made those. So it's a time that we're taking advantage of those items because of the nature of the economy. The other glaring item in front of us is that, for those of us that lived here a long time, or those of us that are new here, we have a lot of vacant property in downtown, and it's not, we all have something in mind that we ultimately expect it to look like. And if we don't plan and envision for what we'd ultimately like to have as a community, things will just happen on that property in their own pace and at their own desire, and it may not be what we want. So I think the framework study piece of this is something that I've heard our Economic Development Administrator find great strength in, having something on the shelf, a vision, something for a developer to ultimately get their eye on and be interested in making a sizable investment in our community because they feel their project works with our vision. So that's just a couple of things to get us started here. I guess we haven't had a motion yet, but thank you for the presentation, and we'll get a motion going and then see if we have some questions from council. Yeah, let me first see, do we have anyone from the public on this? Thank you.
Mayor, we have six speaker cards. First person is Doug Schmidt.
Welcome, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you very much, counsel. I just want to take a few minutes and give you our support, not only representing some of the folks from the chamber, but businesses downtown. The visionary process has been wonderful, and the leadership that we have up here, I think can take this to the next level. So I encourage you very much to vote yes, spend the money, and get this project going. Thank you. Thanks.
Richard Kloster.
Mr. Kloster, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. While I'm not here to encourage you to vote yes, I'm asking you to think very seriously about the money. I've read the documents, looked at the presentation, very well done. I emailed all of you regarding my concern, and I just want to elaborate a little bit. I'll be brief. While the figure was $39,000 not to exceed, when I read some of the documents, it seemed to leave it open-ended, and I'm not sure how you enforce that $39,000, whether you just deposit $39,000 and let Swaback and Partners draw on that, or just how you would do that. But it was concerned to me because when I see mileage and other things, I don't think it was finite. So be careful in terms of approving and then finding there are shortfalls for certain other expenses that weren't accounted for. And I, you know, I just say that the $39,000 was clear. But the printed material that I saw just left it open. And I wonder, in the economic terms that we have right now and the conditions that we have, is it really the time to spend? And I know that the town and the council has approached the future with some caution in terms of not being too aggressive, but to spend the $39,000, $40,000 now, then what are we looking at? You know, as Mr. Davis said, well, it's nothing but a plan, it's on the shelf unless we do something with it. The implication there is we're going to do something with it. I don't think the town's going to build any buildings or create anything. So we're looking for a development. And if you read the newspapers, as I do, and hear the news, what are the commercial districts doing in the immediate Scottsdale area, if you want to use that as an example? They're not bustling with a lot of new business, some are faltering, there's criticisms, et cetera. So, you know, while we'd like to see some changes, let's be real. I think, and the other thing that concerned me a little bit was that appeared to be a little bit of a copy of some of the other, although Mr. Swaback said they hadn't formed a vision totally concrete, just ideas to consider. But looking at the pictures and looking at the material, it seemed to be trying to reflect communities that have already existed, rather than something unique. We don't need another Kirland. I don't think many people in Fountain Hills are going to go shopping, are going to stop going shopping in Kirland or places like that. We need something unique if we're going to attract visitors on a regular basis or special occasions, I think personally.
Thank you, Mr. Kloster.
Okay.
Welcome, Mr. James.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Bo James, and I'm here to say, vote against this. I believe in visioning, I believe it's a good purpose, but I don't believe that we, as a city, you as our town council, I meant to say town, by the way, should grant basically a no-bid, sole-source contract for $40,000, basically on the spur of the moment. This is a project that's already underway by another organization and will happen whether or not the town decides to buy into it. In the newspaper, in the Fountain Hills Times, it states that it's not in the budget for this year or the proposed budget for next year, so where do we find the money? The newspaper says that our town manager says, well, we'll take it out of some economic development funds, but that means something else that that money was scheduled to be spent for will not be spent. What, if that is so unimportant, why was it in the budget to start with, and why has it not, in these times, been transferred to other needs of the town for spending that I've participated in several towns, cities that I've lived in, in visioning and planning processes, and I believe it is a good process, needs to be done, and now, or shortly afterwards, is a good time to be doing it. I just don't think this is the right way to do it, with a sole-source, no-bid contract should be put out to an RFP and not rushed. In the paper, it reported the town manager says that they will finish by the end of June. It's almost done. Well, what can they do in 40 days from now with most of our winter visitors, a lot of people who want to participate? We have a lot of people who leave for the summer, already starting to leave. So the input from the city, from our town members, isn't going to be there. We've had one public hearing, I know we've had some focus groups. I didn't know that was happening, I would have volunteered to be on it. But we're not going to get much input, the type we need to have our citizens have time to sit down and think about it. So I recommend that you vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James.
Frank Ferrara.
Welcome, Mr. Ferrara.
Welcome, me?
Yeah, welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, council, my name is Frank Ferrara. Excuse me, been a long day. My name is Frank Ferrara, I'm the CEO of Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to ask that you consider funding this out of the Economic Development Fund that was set aside some years back with help from the Chamber of Commerce. I recall, some of you may remember, that we were approached by the then-sitting council to ask for assistance in the 4/10ths of 1% sales tax increase, 3/10ths going to the mountain preserve, 1/10th going to economic development. That time, we called it downtown because we had nothing downtown. The money has been accumulated, not part of the general fund, not part of the budget process, but sitting there. We're asking now that since the chamber has already begun the process, we're asking town council to please consider letting the chamber and the town finish this process so we do have something, as a mere so eloquent we put, to look at for future consideration. Yeah, it's the time now. We don't want to wait until we're on an upswing, when everybody can come in and just do what they want, and I think that's what we've done in this town over the years, and I'm going back to the 70s or so. And that's why we have a scattered approach to a rat. What we need is a consolidated approach. What we need is citizen input, which we have gotten for the first time. We'd like to continue that, and we'd like to make sure that the citizens, as Mr. Swaback had indicated early on. If it's not good for the citizens, it's not good for anybody. So that basically, we're not building this for visitors primarily, we're building it for the citizens. We're visioning for the citizens, we're looking at input for the, from the citizens. We're talking about something that could be tremendously important for the town manager, for an economic development coordinator, for the town council, for the Chamber of Commerce, for our business community. And for this, I ask that you please assist the chamber in helping with funding three, four, and five completion, by like $39,000 or $40,000, whatever the final number becomes. And we do believe that this is something that we will all gain out. Remember, again, these ones are for, to protect their free economic development, not used for budget purposes or general fund, and I believe there is sufficient funding available if the council so desires. Thank you, and I hope you make the right choice.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrara. Welcome, Mr. Kirkendall.
Thank you, Jerry Kirkendall. I went to their meeting on this, and a couple of things I liked that I heard and some things I didn't. I'm a little afraid of this right now. Like they said, the store should be facing the avenue from the south side, which made a lot of sense, and they were saying how it can't be too big of a... a lot of sense, and they were saying how it can't be too big of a, you know, an area for our downtown because we don't have a population for it. There's so much commercial space now, which is true. I think anything past that first rope could go back to housing or something. But what bothered me too was the main core, I think, is from Saguaro to La Montana, you have a two-block distance, which is a nice walking distance for people, but we're never going to get anything going until we get stuff on both sides of the street anyway. We need a movie theater or something over there to get it going. But they said that the area is too big and then they turn around and say the core, they also want to go down Verde River all the way to Palisades. Now, I think there should be lights and sidewalks, you know, all the way down, that'd look great. But as far as saying that's the main core, we haven't had the money for fifteen years to finish the avenue. We've been trying to, if you had some lights out on the media where you could have things spring and fall, we could have some great little activities out there in the evenings and it could be stuff going on all the time, but we can't even seem to afford to put lights out there to do something. So I don't know if we're jumping the gun or what. We do need to do something, but I'm a little afraid. And why they came up with a core being twice as big as it is now, doesn't make any sense to me. And people, you know, there's something about our wide streets are a problem and, well, there's things we can do to make it better, but I kind of like our wide streets, this is Fountain Hills, this is not Kirland's. It's just something that we need, I think you really need to think about because I think we need to finish what we started a little bit. We haven't, we haven't done anything. We've been talking for fifteen years. We need to, you know, get that media out there, lights is the main thing I think we need first, and really concentrate when people want to do something across the street to get them going on it. Other than that, I don't know what to say. I just think that this takes some consideration though, and we do need planning, but we've got to be careful. We don't just go off in all kinds of directions and all kinds of things and keep talking for years and years and years again, then every two years come up with another plan. We don't seem to have the money to do anything right now, so I don't know what we're doing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any more, Steph?
Mary Pilarinos.
Welcome, Ms. Pilarinos.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mary Pilarinos. There were two points that I wanted to make. I am going to quote Mike Sharno, his recent article about visioning, the visioning process. One is, it always comes down to this, who is going to pay for it? And another comment that he made, which also made sense to me, if the town's operating budget can be stabilized well into the future, then perhaps it would be easier to embrace a downtown vision. It all comes down to spending, the money, where is it going to come from, who's going to pay for it? According to the Swaback article that I read, a couple of points that I was interested in getting explanation from and did not receive this evening, was the use of the word intervention. I don't understand intervention, how it is applied in this case. I also saw that this plan of Swaback's is about doing one thousand things well. Do we have the money to do one thousand things well? And they acknowledge that similar studies have been done in the past and they've been shelved. What's going to make this any different? The last point they'll make, they are conducting a laboratory like an experiment and we all know that things in a laboratory can go poof. Let's bear that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, the last speaker, Art Talis.
Welcome, Ms. Talis.
Thank you. Mayor, council, I just want to take this opportunity to express my support for the town council, funding this additional thirty-nine thousand-plus dollars to finish this as part of a joint venture with the chamber. My brother Ted Talis, he's an architect with Centerbrook Architecture in Connecticut, and he is, he was shocked when I told him what was happening in Fountain Hills and how Swaback was part of a planning process for our downtown, and he had indicated to me that you're dealing with one of the best in the world. And this is a company, this is a architectural firm that clearly has a history and the track record of success in working with other communities. And our community, this is, I think, as much as individuals have shared, there's been other plans that have been done, now is the time to really focus in and make an investment in ourselves, in the community. The Chamber of Commerce has already made the investment, the town funding it with the Economic Development Funds would be a joint partnership that would show not only the community, but businesses that potentially would want to relocate and invest in our community, that we are all vested in their success. With the Swaback proposal, with a plan, I can tell you with my lending and commercial lending hat on, that this type of plan is also going to be a critical component to any viable business entity coming to this community and actually getting the funding and support on a lending side to do it. So I think it's critical that you support this, that we move forward with this visiting process, allow this world-renowned architectural firm to help us to succeed, let's stabilize our tax base, and let's look to the future to have a phenomenal downtown that will be a regional draw for years and years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Talis. Did I get a motion yet?
No.
All right, thank you. All right.
It's not written down.
Not written down in there?
No.
All right, thanks, I can make one up then. All right.
Do you want a motion or a pause, or are you going to make one?
Um, is that all right? We can do a motion first.
How about understand something?
That's true. Yeah, Mr. Swaback, thank you. Suggestions made. Are there any comments you wish to make prior to making a motion, additional discussion following the motion, but anything that you wish to add to your presentation?
Only if you want me to comment on any of the speakers. I don't have anything to add.
Sure, yeah.
Is that all right? Just a few things. The one comment about there didn't seem to be anything new, that we were kind of replicating what had been seen elsewhere. The place that that's most true is when we deal with retailing. If we're dealing, designing a corporate headquarters or, you know, country club or something where we're looking right at the end user, we can be as different from everybody else as that user wants to be. But when we're dealing with retailing, we have to not only design something that can be built and leased, but can stay leased. And so there's a whole body of behavior that does indicate that this is not the place to be terribly experimental. So we, we ourselves say, nobody needs another Kirland, I mean, one's fine. But we know, for example, that there are certain imperatives about retailing that if you violate them, you probably don't have a successful shop. So that's just, I would agree that there's some notion of standardization when you get at that level. The other comment about a sole-source, non-bid, that's extremely common for us. We don't, we don't bid on anything. In other words, whoever puts out a request or proposal can decide not to hire us, but we're not bidding, nor do we, nor is it our experience that the best municipalities and corporations are necessarily looking to select somebody for, based on their, on their bid. I mean, it's a value-received kind of thing. And I can only say, this is kind of a personal thing, that when we set a lump-sum agreement, and my partner of a long time, Standing, will agree with this, we keep track of all our hours, but not to limit our work. In other words, when we know that the job to be done, if we're billing on an hourly basis, we charge for every hour, if we're billing on a lump-sum basis, it would be a rare case where we ever came out looking good on our own standards. Because, I mean, I think those of you who've been in meetings, we could probably bring half as many drawings and still show that we cared. That's just not our approach. The conversation about not being sure, liked some things, didn't like some other things, I think that's a perfectly good dialogue to have within the process, but not one that would be a test as to whether or not we should keep working. In other words, that's what the whole process is about. Just the clarification on the thousand things done well, that statement is one that comes from me, and ironically enough, I've used it in Mountain Park Ranch where I said, we don't have a world's tallest fountain, or we don't have a London Bridge, but all we can do here is do a thousand things well. In other words, there's no big, no big hit, no grand slam. So that's just, I just wanted to stay with comments I heard and I don't really want to add anything more.
Thank you, Mr. Swaback.
Thank you.
All right, I'll look for a motion for the town, financial participation, funding phases three, four, and five of the Swaback proposal of January 2009 for a master-planned downtown area in the mountain, not to exceed thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Discussion, council member Dickey.
Mayor, thank you. Couple of comments and some fundamental questions because I haven't been in on the, you know, the process very much.
Very good.
First of all, I appreciate what some of the speakers said about being cautious in this time, but also, it's not a time to be paralyzed, and I think that we need to kind of get over that a little bit. There was a town hall on this type of investment in the future, GPEG, as Barry Broom and Michael Bidwell and others who spoke of urgency, just like you did, and they were talking about green industry and other things like that, where you almost blink and you're past the time. So while I really do appreciate being cautious, I don't want to be paralyzed with fear. The other thing I wanted to mention was that we, I'd like to see, and this seems to be connected to the goals that we've set up in Fountain Hills, one which was walkable communities and safe communities. I saw some roundabouts there, which I like the looks of those, as everybody knows here. Also our small town, the things that we said that we would like to see and that the community said they want to see, small town, ambience, events, things like that. The RFP question was something that I wanted to ask, that a citizen had asked about that. And what kind of, that's maybe one of my fundamental, what kind of relationship is that? Is this a precedent-setting kind of thing that we just kind of take over something that started? You touched on that a bit, but I kind of wanted to get the answer to that, just from our, maybe a legal point of view kind of thing. That's obviously an okay thing to do, but maybe some clarification. I also wanted to talk about the eighty thousand dollars that was in our, that was budgeted for this year, for this particular downtown, as we are calling it. And I would, I would imagine that maybe an answer to that has to do with the fact that we thought that we had a project going. We've spent a lot of staff time on that project, so in my opinion, it's kind of a continuation of that kind of a, of a use of that, of those funds. So my question is about the RFP. My also question was about ideas. Where does it come in when you get to more specific ideas? Like you said something about making signs more than a direction. I've spoken to some people about some ideas of a history walk or a plaque, or something that makes people want to go through, something that has to do with nature, or like, when does that phase come in where you are making it something different, where obviously we have retail, but what is the draw? What makes it a place to stroll the kids in the stroller and also people from Scottsdale might want to come by? And then Lori's not here, but my last question has to do with the actual relationship between going ahead with this and finding a buyer for the property that would like to develop it. So that's maybe three questions.
Okay, so as far as the...
RFP.
Okay, thank you. The, do you want to respond to any of those?
Yes, I remember most of the last two, and let me, let me start there. When does this get to be special in the planning process? First of all, we regard that you already have something very special, which is the whole park, the lake, the fountain, and that we don't have to repeat that. But what we do have to do is dramatize it, frame it, you know, sort of, if that's the solo, how do we create the accompaniment that plays off of that? We will have drawings that are, I hope, mouth-watering and tantalizing, but remember, we're not doing those drawings as though we're doing them for a client. We're doing these drawings as, like the track of the honeybee who comes and pollinates the flower with its tail. We hope that they will guide the actions of others. And so that's different than having a commission to do a building in which, you know, the specifics happen between, say, phases where we are now and when we go to the end. Up until now, we've been sort of speaking to the town, exchanging with the town. The documents, when they're finished, will be speaking on behalf of the town. In other words, we're speaking for the town because the town has now had a chance to buy into whatever, the forming of whatever we're doing. So these are a series of tools which are designed to magnetize the kind of things that the town has decided would like to see happen. And the only place that we would dig in our heels is to not, to not try to magnetize things that just aren't likely to happen, and if they did happen, they probably wouldn't work. Okay? I can probably, maybe this isn't the wisest thing to say, but for example, we know that people want a theater, right, movie theater? And we would like a movie theater too, we would like anything. The only, the only discipline that we want to put on this is the best judgment that any of us can put on in terms of what is most realistic, most likely to happen, however visionary it is. We can really stretch it, but it has to be something that has a good chance of working for the long term. It's the difference between designing, say, a corporate headquarters where as long as the entity that's buying it, building it, occupying it, is happy, that's all that matters. But when you talk about uses that somebody else is going to operate, they have to be on their terms, or it's not going to work. Is that reasonable? What were your...
Yeah, I was going to say that, and what you're saying, how does that tie into, doesn't force somebody to do something who buys the property? But it sounds like it's a tool to attract somebody because they'll see something that they like.
Right.
It's obviously can't force them to do that. So like, you just take the movie theater thing and when, you know, we've been talking about this forever, and really, that many screens had been presented to us at an earlier time is not being viable. So if we had something where it was a smaller one, or, you know, you know, a, you know, like panel view, five kind of thing, where it sounds like it could make a living out, you can shape somebody to want to do that, but obviously, we can't mandate it, but it gives them something that looks like it would work.
Or if somebody comes along and has a brand-new idea for a movie theater and says, look, we have enough of these fifteen screens and we have this idea and we're committed to it, we're going to do them all over, and we're a candidate, we're a candidate, we have a place for you, we have a whatever. The same is true, recently, I was told about a medical group looking for a very special kind of campus use for what they were doing, and this is a magnetic area, and Fountain Hills is a very special place. These kinds of things are going to keep coming into this community, and this is just a matter of being, getting yourself near the top of the list as to places that somebody might want to consider. Now remember, most of our work is not for this kind of, you know, client in abstraction. Most of our work are for the kinds of people who might come here, right? I think, shall I stop?
Thank you.
Well, just the RFP relationship, just clarify that a little bit.
Mr. Mayor, council member Dickey, this one is a bit of a different contract than we have seen before, mainly because it's coming to us in a phase that wouldn't allow the normal procurement process. But under both 339 and 3310 of the town code, you have the authority both for exclusive contracts, which despite the fact that, support public bidding, despite the fact that, you know, Title 34 and procurement of professional services like architectural services generally requires a qualifications-based selection, I think we're more shoehorned into an exclusive service contract, as 339 covers, mostly because you can't really go out and bid halfway through. It's just, it's not practical to come and ask another firm to pick up at the end of this process, that's halfway through the process, and then move forward. So I'm comfortable in saying I believe it is an exclusive service contract that you need to go that route. We do also have the authority under 3310 to procure professional services like this without bidding. So it is... So it is, it's covered in a couple of different ways in the town code, so I'm comfortable there's a way that we can do it. In terms of what will the relationship be, the only requirement that we have in the code is that we have some sort of written contract or memorandum of understanding. So I'm not sure if that's going to be with Mr. Swaback's firm, or with the chamber, or how we plan to do that. The authorization first, and then we'll wrap up the details after that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickey. And Town Attorney McGuire, Councilmember Legay, did you want to help clarify that item?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think there's a bit of confusion about how this whole contracting process is working, and I, our dearly beloved local newspaper is wonderful and accurate most of the time, but sometimes, there's some information out there that I think misleads the public. Received, often receive emails based on what people read in the newspaper, and for the most part, it's accurate, but there's a lot of pieces that are missing. And I'm going to have the town manager clarify this, as our town manager, he operates in the area of contracting. With respect to going out for bid, going out for an RFP, first of all, if we were working directly with Swaback, this would be a professional service contract, which typically, we do not go out to bid for, or go out for an RFP. So let's first clarify that for the benefit of the public. Secondly, it's my understanding that the Swaback Group is currently under contract with the Chamber of Commerce. So this is not really a scenario where we are contracting. We have been a partner with the chamber in this process from the beginning. If we were to attach ourselves in sharing the responsibility for completing this project, we would then be, in fact, supporting the project through the chamber. We would, in fact, be allocating whatever funds we're allocating, and we would be going through the chamber. And it's just kind of how this thing has evolved. To be perfectly frank with you, when we started down this road, Swaback phased it, and the reason why we looked at phasing was to see, you know, we've done a lot of this, and a lot of people are saying, "One more time, what's up with this?" And we said, "You know, the chamber jumped on board, they led the charge. We looked at Phase One, we got pretty good information, a lot more comprehensive than we've had in the past. We looked at Phase Two, they included the public, we got a very, very good reaction, very good response. The town's thinking was, if this thing gains momentum, if it's making sense to us, then yes, we'll step up to the plate, and we will begin talking," we haven't decided that this evening, "about the possibility of funding Phase Three, or Phase Four, or Phase Five, or whatever we decide on this evening." So I think this whole notion of RFP and bidding, the chamber actually has, is contracting with the, with Swaback in this particular case. So Rick, you manage contracts, you've been kind of leading the charge on this. Am I off-base on this, or could you kind of clarify where we're at in terms of process, ownership, contracts, no contracts, if we're reimbursing? And then I have a couple financial questions for Julie, to also address some of the misconception that I've heard this evening from a few folks in the public.
Well, Mayor Counsel, I think Mr. McGuire framed the issue with regard to how we potentially approach our partnership with the chamber. I can say that this is a process which, the end product of this is going to be a very dynamic tool that our staff can use in order to generate interest in our community. The culmination of this process, obviously, is the codification of certain aspects of the vision into, probably, potentially into our general plan and other documents of the town, our code. It is very, very critical to us, if we're going to be successful in building our retail base, building our downtown area, and we are, when we are approached by a developer, that we not only can show them, but they, what we expect, but they also understand that those obstacles or those procedures, and that they would have to hurdle in the process of bringing something we very much want to come to the town, have already been addressed by the town council. And so that is why following through with the plan into implementation is so very critical to us. I hope that kind of answers where you were getting at.
To a certain extent, it does. It's just a matter of clarifying, moving forward, what type of contractual or non-contractual arrangement we have, and who we have that with, which precludes an RFP or bidding process.
Yeah, I would very much take a direction from town attorneys, how to do that. We understand the contract currently exists with Swaback Partners. Certainly, possibly a memorandum of understanding with the chamber could be utilized. I think there's definitely a situation here where we view this contract as a, what I would generally call a sole-source provider situation, where, again, as been mentioned, it's very difficult to bid out something that's already, when you're already in the middle of the process of it. There is only one Chamber of Commerce in town. I think that memorandum of understanding possibly could be made with them, and we could stipulate to what degree we're going to participate in the remainder of the contract. And I think you could give any further light, enlightenment, light, and understanding and intelligence to the whole issue.
Anything further, Mr. McGuire?
No, Mr. Mayor, we will work out the details of whatever kind of agreement we need.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor, Marshambo.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Swaback, or Mr. Bernard, either one of you can answer this, but my first statement is, what took you guys so long to get here? You guys are, you're nationally recognized, I've heard your name before, probably down at the League of Cities in Townsend, we have our conference, and periodically have seen some of the stuff that you guys have done. And so I often thought to myself, geez, I wonder when they're going to get to Fountain Hills. Well, you finally made it.
Maybe the time's just right.
So welcome. You mentioned that you do, you don't really come to conclusion with the work that you do, but you give us a tool. Is the tool for directing development, or, you know, I often like to think outside the box and say, gee, maybe this could be. That isn't necessarily what actually happens, but it gives me a tool to direct maybe my efforts in a particular direction. And is that what your work is proposed to do?
Well, we would hope that it'd be very magnetic. In other words, that it would attract the kinds of things you'd like to see happen. We also would like to think that our input could maybe revise some of your codes and ordinances where that's appropriate. And suppose, for example, that somebody comes in with a use that's quite compatible with what we have, you and they would know where they might fit, and you can discuss that. Suppose somebody comes in with an unanticipated use, unanticipated by anybody, but it's desirable. Now you have a fabric in which to say, all right, where might that go, and how does that change relationships around it? So it's operating with a sense of the end in mind. When I say we're not giving you a specific plan, that's a strength, not a weakness.
I understand that.
Okay, so that's the objective.
Being new and haven't seen any of your presentations or participated in any, as I'm one of the council members that haven't had an opportunity to participate, every time something came, something came up that prevented me from attending. Could you explain to me what Phase Three encompasses, what Phase Four encompasses, and Phase Five? And is Phase Five a finality or a start?
Well, I'm going to ask John to help me with this, but Phase Five is where we not only put everything into its final visual form, but we're working with your people for work that your staff might continue to work on, in terms of revisions to ordinances, be it the zoning ordinance, or any kind of stipulations that might stand in the way, for example, street standards, radii at street corners that are maybe favoring automobiles, where a tighter radius would favor pedestrians, that sort of thing. But it would also involve public testimony, public involvement, to where, let's not hope for 100% buy-in, but enough buy-in to saying, okay, we're going to cast the images in this format, and that's where we stop. John, if you would talk a little bit about Four and the rest of Three.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. The Phase Four is, as Vern suggested, it's discussing the, and collaborating with the council, with the city, with the staff, and with the community on potential, specific adjustments to the, suggestions for specific adjustments to the ordinances that are not a, sort of a global one-size-fits-all, but more relates to, you know, we're creating, one of the byproducts that we're developing are these districts that help create the boundaries, and, you know, as opposed to what one of the comments were about the, about making the downtown bigger. We're actually defining it with boundaries that the byproduct of Phase Four would help to define. As we get into Phase Five, what we're trying to produce there is a, a, a format, a formal format, where there's, if another large development comes along, that, for instance, on the main street, if a large development comes along on the south side, that the people on the north side have a formal role in the process, so that there's an opportunity to make sure that it's not only beneficial to the south side of the street, but to the north. Now, that's specific to what we were calling the Main Street District, but the idea is to provide a format with community involvement for that process. That's just, for example.
And about Phase Three, what is Phase?
Phase Three is the, is the graphic representation of what we're defining that the downtown area's potential is. It will actually have defined architecture for, to represent a, you were given a couple of graphics there. It's that type of operation that represents, for instance, that one is discussing how we could enhance the streetscape.
That's the Avenue of Mountains, right.
Right. And that one there is showing Sora Boulevard with parking on either side, some enhanced landscaping, and some paving changes that not only solve calm traffic, but also provide supplemental parking in exchange for wider asphalt, all of which needs traffic input, and that's part of the process for Four and Five. And we're representing some ideas that obviously need some engineering input.
Which just brings forward the calming effect that invites foot traffic, basically. That we're after, isn't it?
And it creates a bond between, a connection between both sides of the street, which right now are challenged, and there's been some improvements to help that, and this is another step, that we've gotten input from the community, and we've looked at a whole bunch of ideas, and talked about underpasses and everything, which we've talked about before, and this is another direction that we went.
Can I elaborate just a little bit? When we take a process that we personally consider to be one continuous crescendo to a completion, and we put phases in it, or tasks for accountability and some way of knowing where are we, it's always going to be a little bit at odds with the reality, if I can recite with DMB when we did DC Ranch, they said, "Every time we put a drawing up on the wall, it's obsolete." And that's the process. I mean, it just keeps, it's a refining, it's a sifting, it's a going on and on, and that goes on through all five phases. And the difference in Phase Five is we say, all right, not only do we crystallize the documents that we leave you with, but we want to build it into, or plant the seeds with your staff, to continually build it into your documents that govern how you approve plans, and how you attract or compel, or repel, things you don't want to have happen.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. If you could just indulge me a little bit more. Rick, Lori's out of town right now, correct?
Yes, Lori Gary, our Economic Development Administrator, is attending an international conference, a shopping centers event in Las Vegas right now.
Okay, that's right, I forgot about that. I was wondering where she was tonight, I was going like, wow, where's Lori? So she's going to use this, when it's done, the chamber, Lori, who's our development coordinator, is going to use this as a tool for success, to help be proactive to bring in, if I understood you right, the right kinds of business, that's not only going to satisfy the visitors that come to this town, but satisfy the citizens who are already here. And are we finally ever going to get a men's clothing store in?
Well, not until you have one that can attract outside shoppers as well.
Right.
Then, you know, at her next conference, Lori would perhaps have a packet that she gives out to people, and she spreads the word, and she has a very tangible way of leaving something, a leave behind. She may have lots of good conversations with people who are possibly candidates, they would have a leave behind that they can think about, get enticed by.
Yeah, and having talked to Lori, Rick, I'm very comfortable that this, this study that we're doing now is not going to want to bring you something that sits on the shelf. I would be very concerned if we were going to go down that road and then just sit something on the shelf. I've seen that happen in the past. The councils I've been on seem to be proactive for business and trying to keep moving things forward, and we did a strategic plan. You know, we know the citizens want us to promote businesses, you know, they don't want to give us property tax, but they said, "Get out there and promote businesses and generate your own money." Well, this is one way of doing that. I think it's good for the town, it's good for Lori, because it's going to give her another tool to work with. I'm thankful that you're here and doing this. You know, Rick and I have often had conversations about, downtimes often create opportunities. And it's fortunate that we've got you in that situation, where we've got downtimes, we've got an opportunity to stand back, take a look at what's going on. We can be proactive instead of reactive, which is what we've been in the past. Developers come to us, they say, "I've got an idea." We have to react to that idea. This way, I'm hoping, and I'm sensing from the direction that I'm getting from both of you, is that this is a tool to encourage the development to happen the way we would like to see it, for success, of not just the development, but success of business, and success of the, you know, adding to the quality of life, I guess, to the citizens of Fountain Hills, and give them something that they can be proud of. Is that correct, or am I misstating something?
Imagine that a component of this plan shows up, and is going to make an investment. Something very assuring is to know, what does the town have planned next to me, behind me, around me, rather than just, you know, am I, like, an experiment, that I'm, you know, I'm popping myself down here in an undifferentiated piece of ground? So it's very important.
I've seen a lot of experiments in this town, they don't work. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Spent a lot of time on a $39,000 item, but it just goes to show how passionate people are with the success of our downtown, and it's good dialogue. Appreciate it. Councilmember Contino.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to ask Julie about the money situation, where it's coming from, how long it's been sitting there, and it's available to use, and so on, so forth.
McGeady.
Mayor Shum, Councilman Contino. The money will actually come out of the fund that is dedicated for economic development. It does not come out of the general fund. Currently, there is about $1.5 million in that fund, and there is a budget appropriation of about $80,000. And that $80,000 is money that is unencumbered, meaning it currently isn't any contract or anything to use it, and also due to some savings. We had some savings this past year with the holiday lighting contract, we saved about $10,000 with that. There is a project that was on the boards to be completed, that isn't going to be completed, and that was for speakers for the downtown. That project is not going to be done this year, and so there's some savings in that fund, so there's some budget authority in that, included in that fund.
Thanks.
Okay, so we're not really tapping into anything that you were saying that is going to cost us anything, it's already sitting there for this use?
Mayor Shum, Councilman Contino, yes, it's a dedicated fund strictly for economic development. It is not in the general fund, it does not affect the general fund at all.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good question.
Councilmember Brown.
Mayor, thank you. I will put my two cents in as being a real advocate for this. I think we'd be missing a real opportunity and doing an injustice to the town by not having a map. not having a map that we could take to the developers, and I will, I will say once again, knowing what's going to be built beside you is, is huge. It's no different than, than what we're doing in our residential neighborhoods day in and day out. When you buy a house and there's a lot next to you, you know what's going to be built. It's limited, it's restricted. And to have a, a map that covers the entire downtown, that's well thought through, but can still be manipulated to accommodate a, if we might have a small school, if we might have a, only, only God knows what might be attracted to us. I think we would be missing the mark entirely by not supporting this.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanson.
You know, for 20 years Fountain Hills just kind of sat here, and only got up to about 5,600 people by the time we incorporated. Incorporation was the first catalyst that took place. We started paving streets, we got K through 12 school, I mean, things started really happening. But since that time, we've, the way it's been happening, we really haven't had anything to say about. I see this as the second big catalyst that can come to Fountain Hills and, and move us up one major big step.
Yeah, appreciate that. Councilmember Legay.
Just, just a closing comment, I, I do pay attention to body language, maybe it's something I should stop paying attention to, but it's interesting to sit up here and, and look at the reaction of people when we, we talk about spending money during the times that we all know about. I don't think there's a person, including my 16 and 12-year-old daughter, that doesn't know that there's a global meltdown going on. Usually she's not concerned about money, other than the $20 bill I can give her every now and then. But my point here is that, you know, I'm as concerned about spending money as, as the next person, and the public has been here this evening and made some really good points. How can you guys spend this money when, when we're, every council meeting up here talking about, you know, cutting expenses, so forth and so on, and, I mean, how come you're budgeting it this year, but you're not budgeting it next year? Well, it's not in our budget for next year, because we have the money in the budget for this year. And frankly, something I've learned on council is that municipal financing is a really strange duck. It's really a strange duck. We had this conversation earlier about arts fund. There is money that comes to the town and goes into a fund called an arts fund. We cannot use that for anything else, it has to be used for arts fund. We currently have $1.5 million sitting in the Downtown Development Fund, which by law, through excise tax, says a certain percentage must be, will be, should be used for downtown development. We're not using money that could be used to, to build a fire station, or to, to pay for other general fund expenses. This is money that is dedicated specifically for this purpose. And there was a comment that I've heard, not only this evening, but from other individuals, when they look at the timeline on this contract, and, and they say, well, it ends. Well, from my perspective, it doesn't end when it ends, it begins when it ends, and the sky's the limit in terms of how much time we have to actualize this, this particular, this particular project. We've invested a lot of money being responsive to the business community and hiring a full-time economic development administrator that is, comes well-qualified and from larger communities. And the first thing she said is, you know, we don't have a portfolio. We don't have anything to sell, and we don't have anything to market, but we have a tremendous potential as a town. So for what it's worth, I, I know it's kind of an oxymoron, how can you folks be spending money when, when the crap's hitting the fan and things are falling apart? This is just money sitting there that can only be used for this purpose. This is an opportunity, and frankly, I, I challenge you to find a price more competitive than the price we're looking at for this particular process. A process like this usually costs you, do your homework with a renowned group, probably, oh, I could ask these guys, but I won't put them on the spot. We did that to our architect for our fire station last week. But, you know, you, you took, I've seen projects like this cost easily $250,000, a visiting project like this. So, you know, the price is right, the money's there, it's all about our future, and it begins when this process is delivered to us. And the citizens, are they leaving town? Yeah, but this isn't going to happen overnight. This is a living dynamic document. We will continue to use it, I hope, and we have a economic development administrator that will be using it and will be actualizing it, something we've never had before to drive things forward. So those are my comments. Municipal financing is just a really strange and odd duck, but it is what it is.
All right, thank you. Good comments. I, I think the partnership with the chambers is another great step to continue. That cooperation with businesses and being business-friendly and driving vitality in our community, this, they're going to, Swaback, from what I've seen, is going to leverage what makes us special and unique in Fountain Hills, not like any other community, not another Kirland, nothing like that. What stood out to me initially was, well, the town doesn't own the land. We own very little land downtown, it's all privately owned, or it's, one lot's built on, the next one's vacant, and Joe Smith owns it, and he lives in California, and the next lot's built, and, you know, it, the town doesn't own it, so how does that work? That was, that was something that's been addressed tonight pretty well. But this plan is going to give us that vision for downtown that we don't have. We don't have that vision. I, I envision this as being something that'll empower the current landholders that maybe wish to sell, make more money, a vision to empower the existing business owners to create something that would be in line with the vision, that would make their small piece of ownership in the community part of a larger overall vision. That all works together to, to make everything more valuable in the end, and, and tantalizing to development on those vacant parcels. Swaback's already done a great deal of homework on all the past reports, the studies that have been done, those are incorporated, they're very familiar with Fountain Hills. And it was mentioned, I, I thought we'd get through tonight without mentioning one of the more exciting pieces, is they're focusing tremendously on connecting, if you can believe it or not, downtown with Fountain Park. Who would have thought? We ended up coming up with a plan to address that. Because I know everybody just loves the, the long, wide pedestrian crosswalks and stop signs there at Avenue of the Fountains and Sora. So we need a plan, this, this will help us to get there. It's going to attract development and align everyone with a common vision for downtown, and it's going to be some, based on what would work in Fountain Hills. Not only what do we want to see, but it'll be there to attract businesses that we feel would be viable here in our town, because we know we hate seeing town, businesses fail in our community, and, and we think this will help that as well. It'll be for the community residents of Fountain Hills to utilize the benefits, the vision that'll be encompassed in this. We'll be first to serve the, the residents of Fountain Hills, but of course, part of that also, we're going to attract other residents from surrounding areas because of how special our community is. And we got a world-class firm that's available and willing to do a job at a great value, and I certainly think this time is the right time so that we end up with development. As the economy rebounds in the next year, two, three, whatever it takes, we're not going to force that to occur any more quickly. Maybe we come up with a new stimulus package, no, we won't be doing that. But I think Swaback's going to maybe carry this forward, since they're giving us such a, a decent value, they'll carry this forward as one of their badges of honor as they continue in their firm with the success that I expect from this one, although it won't happen overnight, of course. But I'm excited to support this and get this moving. All right, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Mayor Seven Zero.
Thank you.
Mayor, could we remind everybody that there was a public meeting scheduled for last night that did get postponed? I don't know if there's potential date reset for the public meeting yet?
Not quite yet.
Not quite. But stay tuned and, and watch for when that meeting is, and please come.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
I need more time.
Really?[1204.21]
I need more time.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of renewing the proposed contract between Town of Fountain Hills, Rural Metro for Fire and Emergency Services for a five-year period, beginning July 109 to June 30, 2014, at the expenditure for fiscal year '09-10 in the amount of $2,852,368. No, let me do that again. Two million, $852,368 for Fire and Emergency Services. Welcome, Rick.
Thank you very much. Mayor, Council, the process that began back in August of '08, and almost as, well, a little bit longer than we've been working on the budget, which you'll consider, yes, tonight, is this process of reviewing some of our options pertinent to fire protection in Fountain Hills. Just to take you through that chronology, we began meeting in August. On January 13th of '09, the Fire Services Committee presented findings to the council and recommended that the town continue a contractual agreement with Rural Metro. Council subsequently authorized the Fire Services Committee to negotiate a contract with Rural Metro. We began that process in March of '09 with the objective of developing a five-year agreement to address fire protection services in Fountain Hills. Here are, listen, I won't go over all of those, but you know very well what our very fine fire department does for us, and how pleased our citizens are generally with the services that they receive from Rural Metro. And we do consider this to be our fire department. We're very proud of it, and we're very much looking forward to continuing that relationship. Some of the substantive changes or additions to the contract that is before you now to consider, there was a reduction in the contract cost of $175,000, lower than last year, and more than $300,000 less than what would have been realized or incurred if the contract had followed along its historic path, meaning a 5% increase over last year's costs. So, we're looking at a significant decrease in the costs associated with fire protection. There is a 3% annual escalation, as opposed to the previous 5% addition of a substation at Shea, which is in progress, and that isn't the fire station, that's, of course, is the Frye Center substation. A commitment to address communications deficiencies, as identified, which is already in progress, and the rewrite of Exhibit E that provides more flexibility to the chief with regard to distribution of manpower without diminishing the amount of manpower that is dedicated to Town of Fountain Hills. In brief, this is a five-year agreement, beginning July 1st of 2009 and ending June 30th of 2014. There is a two-year notification if Rural Metro desires to terminate, one-year notification if the town desires to terminate, and parties may mutually extend the agreement for a two-year periods. The annual cost again is $2,852,368 with a 3% annual escalation. With that, I welcome two chiefs, Chief Dan Cottle from Rural Metro and our own beloved Scott Legreca, chief of the Fountain Hills Fire Department. So, with that, we'd be happy to take any questions you have. I also want to recognize, once again, the participation of those, as I did last time that we discussed this issue, of the council members, council members Contino, Archambeau, and Dickey, on our Fire Services Committee, as well as the staff that worked very hard, Joe McIntosh, Julie Getty, and also the chair of our Public Safety Commission, Mr. Larry Moise, on that. Am I forgetting anybody else that was on that committee?
Yes.
Okay, I hope not. If I am, I apologize for that. So, with that, open any questions and encourage your staff recommendation, of course, is approval of the five-year contract with Rural Metro. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I was going to thank the committee, thank Rural Metro for working with staff in the committee to reduce costs and deliver better services, addressing some of the deficiencies we've seen. And we would like to have addressed particularly Eagle Mountain area. Obviously, it serves other areas, but the supplemental changes to particularly emergency services, emergency medical. So, thank you very much, chiefs. Thanks for being here, and thanks for your hard work. We'll have some discussion perhaps, but I'd look first to have a motion to renew the proposed contract between Town of Fountain Hills, Rural Metro Fire and Emergency Services for a five-year period, beginning July 109, ending June 30, 2014, and the expenditure for fiscal year '09-10 in the amount of $2,852,368, $2,852,368 for Fire and Emergency Services. Welcome, Rick.
Thank you very much. Mayor, Council, the process that began back in August of '08, and almost as, well, a little bit longer than we've been working on the budget, which you'll consider, yes, tonight, is this process of reviewing some of our options pertinent to fire protection in Fountain Hills. Just to take you through that chronology, we began meeting in August. On January 13th of '09, the Fire Services Committee presented findings to the council and recommended that the town continue a contractual agreement with Rural Metro. Council subsequently authorized the Fire Services Committee to negotiate a contract with Rural Metro. We began that process in March of '09 with the objective of developing a five-year agreement to address fire protection services in Fountain Hills. Here are, listen, I won't go over all of those, but you know very well what our very fine fire department does for us, and how pleased our citizens are generally with the services that they receive from Rural Metro. And we do consider this to be our fire department. We're very proud of it, and we're very much looking forward to continuing that relationship. Some of the substantive changes or additions to the contract that is before you now to consider, there was a reduction in the contract cost of $175,000, lower than last year, and more than $300,000 less than what would have been realized or incurred if the contract had followed along its historic path, meaning a 5% increase over last year's costs. So, we're looking at a significant decrease in the costs associated with fire protection. There is a 3% annual escalation, as opposed to the previous 5%, addition of a substation at Shea, which is in progress, and that isn't the fire station, that's, of course, is the Frye Center substation. A commitment to address communications deficiencies, as identified, which is already in progress, and the rewrite of Exhibit E that provides more flexibility to the chief with regard to distribution of manpower without diminishing the amount of manpower that is dedicated to Town of Fountain Hills. In brief, this is a five-year agreement, beginning July 1st of 2009 and ending June 30th of 2014. There is a two-year notification if Rural Metro desires to terminate, one-year notification if the town desires to terminate, and parties may mutually extend the agreement for a two-year periods. The annual cost again is $2,852,368 with a 3% annual escalation. With that, I welcome two chiefs, Chief Dan Cottle from Rural Metro and our own beloved Scott Legreca, chief of the Fountain Hills Fire Department. So, with that, we'd be happy to take any questions you have. I also want to recognize, once again, the participation of those, as I did last time that we discussed this issue, of the council members, council members Contino, Archambeau, and Dickey, on our Fire Services Committee, as well as the staff that worked very hard, Joe McIntosh, Julie Getty, and also the chair of our Public Safety Commission, Mr. Larry Moise, on that. Am I forgetting anybody else that was on that committee?
Yes.
Okay, I hope not. If I am, I apologize for that. So, with that, open any questions and encourage your staff recommendation, of course, is approval of the five-year contract with Rural Metro. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I was going to thank the committee, thank Rural Metro for working with staff in the committee to reduce costs and deliver better services, addressing some of the deficiencies we've seen. And we would like to have addressed particularly Eagle Mountain area. Obviously, it serves other areas, but the supplemental changes to particularly emergency services, emergency medical. So, thank you very much, chiefs. Thanks for being here, and thanks for your hard work. We'll have some discussion perhaps, but I'd look first to have a motion to renew the proposed contract between Town of Fountain Hills, Rural Metro Fire and Emergency Services for a five-year period, beginning July 109, ending June 30, 2014, and the expenditure for fiscal year '09-10 in the amount of $2,852,368, $2,852,368 for Fire and Emergency Services. Sorry about that.
Motion to accept.
Thank you.
Second?
All right, for a second. Anyone from the public?
No, mayor.
Thank you. All right, comments, questions for staff, the committee, chiefs? All right, excellent. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks again. A lot of work going into that. Thank you for having everything so well prepared. All right, next item, presentation of consideration resolution 2009-16, adopting the maximum amount for the Town of Fountain Hills fiscal year 2009-2010, tentative budget with appropriate direction to publish said documents in accordance with state law, of course. Call on Julie. Who's that? Ms. Getty?
Hello.
Welcome. Thanks for hanging out with us. Oh, Mr. Davis?
Yes, it's my pleasure, once again.
Just because we got through the last one quick.
That's right, and I want you to know, we only have 172 slides here tonight to share with you as we go over every detail of the budget. Actually, we're pleased to present to you the 2009-2010 annual budget for the Town of Fountain Hills. We are very pleased to say that this has been, I think, one of the more transparent and collaborative processes that we've taken the town through in recent years because of two reasons. Obviously, public participation via the open houses, workshops, but also, we have utilized an executive budget committee this year that the mayor sat on, myself, Julie Getty, Mary Martin, Joe McIntosh, Shawna Williams, and am I forgetting anybody else that was on that committee? That is the executive budget committee. What I wanted to do is just get this going a little bit. Basically, the council and strategic plan goals are incorporated in this budget. We appreciate very much the time you spent with us on two retreats to begin formulating the council goals that serve as the platform or foundation of this budget. Without that participation in that direction, very early on in the process, this budget wouldn't have meant as much, and I'm very clear and sure that it would not have had as much of a beneficial effect on the quality of life of our citizens as this one is anticipated having. General fund revenues, as you know, is down 9% from last fiscal year. Expenditures are down 10% from last fiscal year. Overall revenues are, overall revenues up 29% from the previous year with the addition, of course, of potential grants and stimulus funding. And we need to anticipate receiving those grants, so, as you know, by adopting the maximum amount here tonight, we're then able to expend those funds in the event that we realize those grants. Overall expenditures are up 25% for the same reasons. Most of these expenditures have to do with large capital projects, Shea, fire stations, these kinds of things that are going to increase the budget over last year. Just very quickly, just, again, I'm not going to recap all of this in the interest of time, but we went through a number of meetings with you, goal-setting retreats, public open houses, even a mayor's town hall meeting where we addressed the budget. And it brought us all the way to this point right now, where we are here to adopt the maximum expenditure limit and the tentative budget. In June, of course, we will be finalizing, have the final public hearing and adoption of the budget. The goals, as you remember, just shooting forward here, we have 13 goals, and we have gone over these before. Also, you can see some of the budgetary impacts of implementing those goals. One thing to note here, as Julie presents the rest of these numbers, that we have transitioned to a program-based budgeting format. This is going to be a little bit different than you're used to in the past, whereas the expenditures that we're going to present for you tonight incorporate some of those costs that, in the past, because we were on a different kind of system, had different software, et cetera, might have been left by the wayside and not included in the calculations. These include our own internal labor costs to bring some of these things forward. So, you're going to say, "Well, didn't we only budget $20,000 for the continuation of the strategic plan?" For example, yes, and that's what's in the budget, but this cost, this budgetary impact calculates and presents to you those costs associated with our internal costs, our efforts, labor, et cetera, associated with making sure you get that strategic plan. And so, keep that in mind as we go on. All 13 of the goals are addressed by this budget. Keep in mind also that the budget is not just a collection of numbers, it is the primary policy statement of the town council for the year. And therefore, we felt it necessary to make sure that we have addressed all 13 of your goals, and we'll be happy to report to you on a quarterly basis, as we have done in years past, our progress towards realization of those goals. So, with that, I'm going to turn the time over to Julie and Mary and walk you through the budget. Our goal is to have some final direction, I say final, but significant direction from you tonight, questions, et cetera, that we can address now. But we, of course, always welcome your feedback, all the way to the end of the fiscal year, when, then, of course, it is the 11th hour, and we have to finalize this budget. So, with that, Julie?
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick. Mayor's members of the council, there are a lot of slides here, and some of them, most of them, the council's already seen a few times, several times, and the public has as well, so I won't labor over those slides. As Rick said, the goal would be for, to sort of get into some of the details of the budget and give the council an opportunity to ask questions about the different details that are in there and have some conversation about that. So, basically, this chart here is just a summary of all of our funds, the revenues and the expenditures for all of our funds. And as we talked about earlier, some of these funds are restricted for specific purposes. The main focus of the conversation for the budget is usually the general fund. That's where all of our operating funds are, and that's primarily what the slides will be later on, as far as getting into the details. Again, as Rick talked about, some of the initiatives that we're bringing forward this year are proposing with this budget and looking for some direction from the council that, yes, you want us to move forward on this, or no, not to. One is the proposal to amend our financial policies, as we've talked about before, to reclassify a portion of our general fund fund balance, which is our savings account, and classify it as a rainy day fund. And what that would mean is we would bring back to the council a proposal and a resolution to make that change. It doesn't mean we will spend the rainy day fund, it just means that we will put it in the budget as a separate fund to be used in the case of an emergency. Also, there is stimulus and grant funds that are programmed in to provide about $4.8 million for projects, and we're also proposing to put to the voters a question to authorize $4.5 million in road bonds for major road improvements, specifically Saguaro Boulevard.
Mayor. Thanks, mayor. Thank you. Julie, would you like us to stop you if you're on a slide and we've got a question on it?
Absolutely, mayor.
The rainy day fund, you and I had a conversation earlier today about that, and I couldn't find it in our budget. Could you tell the rest of the council where that's at and what page that's on? I think it was page 70, if I remember right.
It's 71, I believe. And basically, the rainy day fund is shown, it's not shown as a revenue or as an expenditure because it is not a revenue nor is it an expenditure, but it's shown in our summary, and I believe it's on page 71, 41?
It might have been 71, then.
71?
It's right there somewhere.
Page 70. And on the very first line, it's spelled out as rainy day fund, but there, and it just, that's going to be the fund balance of that fund. Directly under it is the general fund, fund balance of 5-point-something million dollars. If you recall, our total general fund balance is $6.5 million. This is just taking that fund balance, that savings account, and splitting it into two pieces with two different purposes.
Now, just for the public's benefit, that doesn't affect our bond rating by taking some of that fund away from our general fund balance and moving it to a rainy day fund? Correct?
Mayor, vice mayor, no, it does not. It actually improves our bond rating because it's showing that we are preparing for emergency. We have sufficient 30% fund balance, including the rainy day fund, so it actually improves it because it shows that we are anticipating and preparing for an event like a significant drop in revenues.
And again, for the citizens' benefit, could you explain with that rainy day fund how we plan on increasing that amount, or how we plan on addressing that each year?
Mayor, vice mayor, basically, the way the rainy day fund would work is it would sit in a separate fund as a savings account not to be expended. It would be used in the event that we had an emergency, such as the legislature decided that they were going to take all of our state shared revenues and tell the towns to use development fees. Well, the town probably wouldn't use development fees. We would propose that we use the rainy day fund. And so, it's there to be used in the event of that type of event. We didn't plan for it, we couldn't prevent it, it wasn't a lack of our planning, it wasn't expenditures that we over-expended. We would have to then, by policy, replace it over the next three or four years to bring it back up.
So, we'd be responsible in putting the fund back. Is there a cap that we want in that rainy day fund, or is that a fund that has the ability presents itself, we'll just keep adding to, so that it gives us a bigger cushion?
Mayor, vice mayor, I think the goal would be to have a sufficient amount of funds to supplement the operations of the town. It wouldn't be where you would just keep adding to it and make it grow. You know, that would be something that you would set aside for capital-type projects, but this would be just an emergency-type fund so that you could get through, you know, a couple of months.
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
Thank you, mayor. Julie, speaking of caps, we are not bound by any statute in how much we can save, but we do have a spend, an overall spending cap, right?
Mayor, Councilwoman Jenny, yes, we do. The state has an expenditure limitation that specifies you may not spend more than a certain amount of money every year. That estimate is established by the Economic Estimates Commission, but there's also exemptions from that. So, our, for example, our expenditure limit, I think, is about $28 million. So, our budget to spend is $35 million, but there are things that are exempt. Grant funds are exempt, HER funds are exempt, bond funds are exempt, so that would bring us below that expenditure limit. But there's no limit on how much revenue we can bring in.
And mayor, Julie, I understand some municipalities, they do try to expand that cap, but we have not done that. Is that correct?
Um, mayor?
I think it has to go out for a vote or something, Andrew, or how do they do that?
We did.
Are we talking about a permanent base adjustment, or, I don't believe we've done a permanent base adjustment so far. Those are voter-approved, yes.
Didn't we do it, we took over the parter district?
I don't know.
All right. We did it one time.
But basically, we do not have to worry about a certain percentage that we save. Thank you.
Another initiative is our consolidated fee schedule, which will be adopted and included with the budget. Inside that fee schedule, there are all of our fees that we currently have. In addition to that, there is one fee included in the fee schedule that is, would be a new fee, and that we would be bringing back to the council, and that is for a liquor license application fee. Currently, we don't charge anything for liquor licenses, and that is included in our fee schedule, and we would propose to bring that to the council at the time when you adopt the final budget as part of the budget adoption process for new fees. The additional fees, the franchise fee on utilities, the stormwater utility fee, the increase in the telecommunications sales tax, after getting feedback from the council, we would expect that if there was support for it, that we would move forward with preparing the paperwork necessary for those. Some of them require voter approval and have deadlines as to when we have to notify the county that we intend to have an election, and those dates are coming up. So, we were hoping tonight that the council would, you know, give us some feedback and some indication of whether they would want us to move forward with those or not.
Well, I have a discussion on that. All right, I won't speak first on that one. So, maybe you could clarify those items. I guess they're up there, franchise fees in utilities, stormwater utility fee, increased telecom sales tax rate. I don't think I need to recuse myself for that one. Liquor license application fees, revised development fees, and leased space in town. All those the items you want us to go through one by one?
Yes, mayor, I should clarify, the revised development fees, we're already going through that process, and the council will come back with that. The, again, the liquor license fee would be included in our fee schedule, which would be adopted on June 4th. The other fees are much longer term, so those are the ones, specifically the franchise fee on utilities, the stormwater utility fee, the telecommunications, and the bonds, which I think are on the next page.
Julie, are revenues from those new, those proposed items included in the budget?
No. No, there is, none of these are included in the budget.
All right, thank you. Thanks, mayor. Thank you, mayor. Julie, some of those fees, if we started enacting them now, we wouldn't receive the revenue this year anyhow, so that's why they're not included in the budget, correct?
And it's a long process to go through some of these, some require voters, and it just takes a long time, so that's correct.
Could you explain to us the, maybe in a monetary sense, what we're talking about as far as, like, franchise fees on utilities, what we currently charge now, what we're proposing, or what we're thinking about proposing? The stormwater utility fee, that's an unfunded mandate. The utility fee itself isn't an unfunded mandate, but the management of our stormwater is an unfunded mandate from the state. Is that correct? Federal. Okay. And so, therefore, the only way that we have to recoup the expenditures that we have to come up with, and I'm assuming, Tom, that we're already doing some of those expenditures, is to start doing a stormwater utility study to find out what type of fee structure we're looking at. Is that correct?
Mayor, vice mayor, yes. Specifically, the stormwater utility fee would probably be two years or more out, but there's a significant amount of work that goes into that, and one of them would be a study. The good thing about our new software is that we now have these program budgeting. We can now isolate those costs for stormwater costs, whereas before, they were just sort of buried into public works, and we had to go digging around. So, the good advantage of that is now we can isolate and set aside all those stormwater costs. The franchise fee is, again, requires a vote, so if we're going to put it to the voters, we have to notify the county. You're asking about possible revenues. You know, I can give you a ballpark on the franchise fee of about $500,000, $600,000, but that would be an estimate. The stormwater utility fee would be a recovery fee, so I'm not sure what that would be.
Right, we would just figure out, with the new program we have, we'd figure out what those costs are, and we'd just be basically recovering that.
Correct.
And the increase in telecommunications tax, I know the mayor has to recuse himself there, but what are we charging now, and what are we, what is the proposal?
The telecommunications sales tax, the current rate is 2.6%, which is the rate for all of our activity. There are several cities and towns that charge 4% for telecommunications. You know, depending on what rate we wanted to increase it to, if we increase it to 4%, it would be about $600,000 a year.
So, it's a way of diversifying our revenue stream. Okay, thank you, Julie. Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you, mayor. The stormwater utility fee, when we did not fund that last year, it was about $20,000 to take the first step. Can we now do this without expending funds?
Can we now do this without expending funds? Because, remember, we wouldn't, we, we did not vote to do that, and we knew that that meant that it would take another year for us even to begin to study it. So is our new, is there something new that we have now that enables us to go forward with that without budgeting for that item?
Um, Mayor, Councilwoman, we did not budget anything next fiscal year for a study or any of that. We would begin to do the work to put that program together and probably come back in 10, 11 if we needed to pay a consultant. But there's nothing budgeted other than, you know, staff time would be to put all that program together.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. The, well, feedback, probably no surprise. The stormwater utility fee, I don't like Stormwater Management Act additions to the Clean Water Act at all, of course, and I'd rather our Congress, the national level, clean it up for states such as ours in the desert that seem quite silly to go run and try to test the water quality of a wash that runs twice a year. And I know there's other things included in there. Councilmember Dickey, you're going to probably remind me of, but there are fees, there are, there are costs that we're going to have to absorb due to a federal mandate. So I, that's one that I could justify. The other items are, seem to me at this time, are things to consider because of a lack of revenue in our town, but are frankly, getting money from our residents in a form other than what might be considered taxes. So I'm not particularly, at this down economy, not excited about considering those items at this time. The liquor license application fee seems to make sense because, as was mentioned, we seem to be a mill for liquor license applications because we don't have a fee and other communities do, whatever that might be. We always have a liquor license on our agenda, and, and there's costs to process those, of course, by staff and others. So I'd like to recuperate cost on those. Recuperate cost on stormwater utility fees, but not get, somehow have this study be as inexpensive as possible to determine what that would, would cost, or the fair way to assess that fee, not consider lots of different methods, such as slope of roofs or amount of roof space or slope of lot. A whole bunch of things. I'd like a straightforward report on considerations of a stormwater utility fee. And apart from the stormwater utility fee and liquor license, and of course, revised development fee that's underway, I wouldn't look to move on those other items at this time.
Mayor, there's one, I'm sorry, there's one that should be on here, and it's the, also requires a vote of the people, is the bond for the roads for Saguaro Boulevard. That's 4 and 1/2 million. So we've, you know, talked about it over the last several budget meetings, and so if we, council wants us to move forward on that, we need to let the county know that we're planning to have an election for that. And we have to let them know that pretty soon.
All right. So we wanted, it seems like the discussion, one addressing that previously, the council was in favor of having it as an option, so maybe considering it in a budget, just so if it felt, we needed to move in that direction and, and/or stimulus monies came available or something came forward in order to allow that amount to be funded, that we would have that opportunity to spend that money on that item. But as far as making a decision to put it on a ballot, when, what would that timing be more precisely? Do you know? October?
For the November ballot, you have about a month.
About one month?
You have to make the decision in time to allow notification to the county by the first week of July, I believe.
July 6.
All right. So I need council discussion on that item. Thank you for bringing that up. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Julie, I think we need to move forward with the stormwater utility fees. We need to look at telecommunications sales tax, liquor license, revised, we're doing the development fees. We also need to get that bond issue for the road. That's a very important infrastructure. It's a main artery in this town, and I think if we start letting that fall apart, you know, we've got to let the voters decide on that, but certainly, maybe we can, we can lessen the impact on that by providing some additional funding and maybe not asking for the $4.5 million, maybe a little bit less than that if we can find, if we get some funding available there. But the franchise fee on utilities, that, that goes to the voters too, doesn't it?
Um, Mayor Vice Mayor, that's correct.
Yeah, and I would opt for that to let the voters decide, you know, go forward with that. If we're going to go for one, a bond issue, would that be at the same time, Andrew?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, all bond issues have to be voted on in November, so...
Okay, so that would be a November vote also. I don't see the, it'd probably be cost-effective to at least put that forward until the voters want to give it to us. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Yes?
The franchise fee, when that goes out to a vote, do you tie that to any use? Because we keep hearing that people may be more inclined to vote for something if we, like with the bond, with the roads, be like, boom, here's what it's for. Do they ever do that with something like that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, Mr. Dickey, I believe that the franchise fees are essentially just a fee on the use of the right of way, so it's like a charge rather than a specific targeted fund for something or another. There would be separate questions on the ballot. You know, for instance, you know, water is one of the utilities that's in the streets that doesn't have a franchise, and actually, we're required to have a franchise agreement with them right now. So that's one we could remedy. Natural gas is also another one that's in town, a very limited quantity, but also would be a separate question. They are limited to 25 years in duration, and are, the election costs are supposed to be borne by the franchisee, so that you would then be able to spread some of your costs even more further with some of the franchisees being able to pick up that cost.
Oh, Mayor. Andrew, if we had them both on the same ballot, then we could potentially get a little bit offset of the ballot, of, of the cost of the election for the bond.
It would be, we'd have, we'd have to determine exactly what fair share would be allocated to each one of the, the utilities that would be on there. But it certainly would offset some of that same election. Wouldn't necessarily offset the cost of the bond election, there are separate costs associated with that. But it would associate the actual physical day at the polls, the election workers and their, and their cost to the county, it could offset some of that cost.
Yes, Mayor, and I would expect that. I would expect to, to pay something out for the bond election. So then I think I'm kind of along with Mike as far as going ahead and putting that out there. I definitely think we should do the road bond, because again, these are voter, voter opportunities to weigh in, and the stormwater. I would be in favor of that, too.
Andrew, on the stormwater utility fee, is that, that's, I thought that was something that would not go to the ballot? That the utility fee, that would not?
Mayor, members of the council, that is one that we haven't fully explored and how you're going to see it. The city of Flagstaff has done it recently without a ballot initiative, but I'm not certain that we have the same authority they do. So we're, we're holding off on giving a definitive answer on that one, but I think that the other ones are certainly normal franchise elections, and that one's just a little bit of an odd duck.
Yes, that, if you want to. Councilmember Leger?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Seeing that we're going through this whole list here in terms of voter, non-voter, the telecommunications sales tax, is that voter-approved, or can we just initiate that?
Telecom sales tax is, is actually not a franchise. It is a license, but again, now we're getting out into the areas that we haven't been able to, to give you the kind of information you need to make a, a decision on going forward on those. We just need to know if you need us, want us to move forward to the position where you can make those decisions. I, I think that there are about seven different things on this menu, and we're not going to be able to give you every one of them in full detail. We need to know what's your, what's completely off the table, what's on the table, so that we can get back to you in a very short period of time.
I asked a question, and I understand it's a lot of staff time. I guess my question there is, would require minimum research, I would, would hope. Your body language is telling me no, however, I would like an answer to that, to that question. I mean, this is like a, a menu of choices here, and I'm sitting here dining, and I'm trying to figure out which way to go, and I need to understand the implications of, of each of them before I can even chime in on, on whether, you know, I'm on board with these or not.
I suggest we keep a very light fare in our dining.
I, yeah, I mean, we're, kind of where I'm, where I'm coming from on all of this, and I, I really am not prepared this evening to say thumbs up or thumbs down on any of these, but, I mean, just in general, if we go to the voters asking for $4.5 million, philosophically, I want to take everything else off the table. You know, and if we're successful there, then we're successful there. If we're not successful there, then that's where I want to know how the others apply, voter, non-voter. For example, if the, the bond fails and state shared revenue gets, you know, some of this stuff starts diminishing, as we talked about this evening, and we can see the writing on the wall, then I would probably want to pull a lever on, on that, which could be expedited the soonest, and that's why I asked the question about voter, non-voter, because that's how I, that's how I would stack my decisions up. I do not want to nickel and dime the public, particularly given our, our economic outlook. I'm even a little leery about going for the $4.5 million on, on the bond, and so that's, that's kind of where I'm, I'm coming from on, on all of this. Yes. And it looks like, just to summarize, it looks like the liquor license application fee is pretty much in motion, because it's on, it's on the fee schedule. The revised development fees are in motion, and we've got that 30-day period, I guess July 2nd is the end of that, or whatever that period is. Leased space in Town Hall, I mean, that's not a, a major source of revenue, but it's also not going to be a, a burden on the citizens if we go, go there. Julie, you?
Mayor, Councilmember Leger, the increase in the telecommunications sales tax, as it were as a program city, it, it does not require a vote of the people. It's a vote of the council. So that the council can increase it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson.
I, I agree. I have a concern. If we went with the bond for the street for Saguaro, and then also put the franchise fee on, that could kill the $4.5 bond. And also, I think the school is going for an override as well, and so we need to put that in the mix, too. I mean, the voters could look at the ballot and go, you know, everybody wants money from us. And I think that could be a shared ballot, though, which would help reduce the cost as well, if we share it with the school district.
Good point. Thank you. Crystal clear? Yeah? Uh-uh.
I don't think we can move on any of this.
How many?
Do I understand from the majority of the council then that you, you are in favor of our addressing the Saguaro issue with the bond initiative, but you would like to keep the ballot clear of any other tax initiatives? Is that, I'm counting nodding heads.
I think that's safe to say.
Again, this does not mean we cannot address this in the future, but I, I think we have some clear direction.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Yes. Since the stormwater, thank you, Mayor. Since the stormwater utility study takes a couple of years, I, I wasn't clear as to what the direction of the council was on that one. Could somebody else weigh in here?
Um, Mayor, Vice Mayor, my understanding is we'll move forward with preparing the groundwork, because there's a lot of work to be done with it for staff time, but determining whether it needs a vote of the people or not a vote of the people, we're still a couple of years off from, from putting this whole program together.
And that's what I was getting at. I don't know if the council realizes that if we don't go that direction, it's several years out before we even get to that point. And each time we delay it, we're delaying it two years before maybe we get to the voters, and then another year before we even collect the fee. So the longer we procrastinate on that one, even if we vote it down, but at least I would like to see the council at least move forward with doing the study on that to find out, you know, what are the expenses, what are the implications? And it might be something we just decide we want to absorb, but if we don't do the study now, we might have to do it later, and if, and if it's, if it's a number that's fairly high, it may be something that we want to address. That's, that's why I'd like the council to weigh in, at least on that one.
Thank you.
Mayor, I thought that we said we were going to go ahead with that, so...
So what does that entail in the budget for this coming year?
Mayor, there's nothing budgeted specifically for any outside consulting work for, that, but we have started the process of creating the program so that we can start putting this together. So I don't, there's no budgetary impact. We just will start moving forward in that direction.
And that's a recapture of a fee of a cost that, similar to liquor license and other, some other items, not, not simply an add-on tax to utilize in a vehicle that's available. It's an actual recapture of costs, so I'd be comfortable with them, with you continuing to determine the best method to obtain those funds that we have to spend. Yeah. So I think you're good there.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
The, all right, where are we at, Julie?
I'll keep going. Again, we talked a little bit about the new software. I won't belabor this, but for the presentation tonight, in the, in the departmental budgets, you can see that I've compared both the old way, the line item way of budgeting, and then the program budgeting. So the two numbers equal the same, the totals. One's the old way, and one's the new way to hopefully help with the, understanding how program budgeting works. And this is an example, and this is what we, the traditional budgeting, we have the planning and zoning department, and we have salaries and benefits, contract services, repairs and maintenance. And then we have program budgeting. We have the same department, but we have different programs. We have a program called planning. And then within that planning program, we have a program called current planning. And then we have long-range planning. And then we have environmental planning. So there's multiple layers that we can do with this. And we can still report the old traditional way, or we can report the program budgeting way. So it, it gives us a lot of flexibility. It gives us more accountability. We can now look at what is the true cost of providing that service. And so I think it's, it's a, it's a good benefit for the citizens and for the, for the council to understand how much each service delivery costs.
I want to congratulate Mr. Turner for getting the cost of planning zoning down to $21. That's very, very good job. Great job.
That's a chart of all of our funds. We've talked about this before, and the expenditures for all of the funds. And now we'll get into the individual departmental budgets, and again, this would be the opportunity for the council to ask any questions or give any comments on the individual departments or program budgets. And again, just going over this briefly, we have no merit or cost of living increases. We've cut down on all overseeding except for Fountain Park. Same with mowing of the turf. We've cut that in half except for Fountain Park. Same with palm tree trimming. We reduced our fleet. We've delayed some maintenance projects on Fountain Park. We've reduced our print issues of avenues. We'll still continue to do the electronic, but we're only going to do four print, and we've delayed wash maintenance and, and annual pavement maintenance. The first budget is the town council budget, and you can see that we have the traditional line item budget, and next to it, we have the program budget. And the difference this year is salaries and benefits in the council's budget now includes the support staff for that budget. That's part of the council now as a program. So the council salaries are still the same as they were. The council didn't get a raise, but in addition to it, they have now a piece of the support staff for $18,000 that goes into their budget. Another item included in the council's budget is the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, the membership, and then the contribution to the Sister Cities Program, and then training legislative events, and then Town Hall meetings and miscellaneous for $8,800.
Julie, I might, yeah, slide, I think before that, was it the pie with the use of funds, general fund, that piece there?
Whoops, sorry.
I think it's the one that shows, and maybe it's hard to see in the public, here in the audience, or the huge audience, or the, over Channel 11, but the two larger pieces of the dark pie are fire department and law enforcement totaling 41% of the overall general budget, or general fund, which is really the operating budget of the town, which encompasses everything, for the most part, short of capital projects. So the fact that the general fund is being, or this town council's considering continuing, continuation of dramatically reducing our budget, our general fund budget, and the hard work by the staff, in light of the fact that costs for fire, not in this case, it went down a little bit, costs for law enforcement, those items and others are... little bit, costs for law enforcement, those items and others are generally fixed items or you would consider them going up year after year. But some of those items really can't be reduced to any great extent, certainly, or will go up. The fact that we're able to reduce the overall budget, again, to the extent that you're suggesting, is commendable. And I thank you and the staff, Rick, for getting innovative again and continuing to keep us ahead of the curve, unlike some other government entities around our state, so, or our state in particular. But thank you. I think that, I think that chart there showing the fire and law enforcement as being, you know, a big portion of our overall general budget just needs to be mentioned in light of the fact that the overall pie is getting smaller. The pieces are, stay the same size, or these two pieces get larger. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And it really has been a collaborative effort with all of the team, all of the department heads in every department. Everybody has contributed a great deal to this, so it's something that we've all worked together with. So thank you. Oops. So was there any comment on the council's budget?
Councilmember Cantino.
I just want to make one comment. I want to thank you again for what you've done, and you explained a lot of things to me that I just didn't understand, especially with this new software. I think that in the general fund expenditures and what we're looking at, I would hate to see us lay off anybody from parks or in streets or in facility maintenance. I think that we're down to the lowest we can go. And the only suggestion I would have is if the senior staff would start taking some days off without pay to help budget some of this stuff and still keep their jobs. Thank you.
Something that consider, I would imagine the innovation, maybe you've considered that. I know you have a limited amount of funds already, and this year you'll have less, and you have services that you need to staff for the programs that are, that are there for the seniors. So a suggestion to, I mean, generally, we, our town manager empowers department directors to keep within a budget a dollar amount. We expect that that dollar amounts maintained or obtained in a way that delivers the maximum amount of services to the residents. You want to comment on, Councilmember Cantino?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And Councilman Cantino, definitely, everything is on the table that we're looking at. This budget is just a plan. We really don't know how revenues are going to come in next year. So we have to be prepared to make whatever changes are necessary to match the revenues that we get. If we get less revenues, that means we spend less. We can't spend more than what we take in. So every idea is being considered. Hopefully we won't have to do it, but, you know, whatever we have to do to bring the budget in line is what we'll do. Thank you. So move to the next department? Maybe not?
Municipal Court. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you. Julie, on the League of Cities and Towns in the budget highlight sheets that you gave us, the $9,544, now is that just for the conference, the league conference?
Mayor Shlum, Councilman Hanson, let me just double check for one second on the detail. I'll have Mary, I think that is, attending the conference?
I know there's a separate, I think there's a-
All of the costs related to-
I think there's a separate item, isn't there, that I saw somewhere else for membership to the league, just like there would be for MAG or, I think it's on, whatever page that's located on.
Just an idea to throw out, you know, maybe, I don't know how much the booth costs, but maybe look at suspending that for a year to reduce the convention or the conference cost. And just, you know, maybe our one-and-ones could be for coffee instead of eating, just some of these little things that we might want to consider, just modifying the way that we've operated in the past.
In fact, can I respond to that, Mayor?
Yeah.
This is probably a good time to break this to you all.
Oh, yes.
But in fact, one of our proposals is that those meetings actually, every other month occur at Town Hall with me, and so Shawna will be making those arrangements for you. And a question on the other side, were you referring to the booth at the Festival of Cities that we participate in? I don't think we have any funds budgeted in this, this year to participate in that event like we have done in the past.
Okay, so this amount then is just for the-
Are we not, we're not doing the-
This, Mayor Shlum, Councilman Kathy, or Hanson, it's the league conference registration for the council. It's the hotel, the mileage, the food at the league, and that's pretty much it for the league.
We don't have Festival of City things, it's just-
I know it is.
No festivities?
No festivities.
It is dramatically reduced from what we typically, because we've typically brought quite a bit of staff down there for a lot of educational aspects, and that's been all largely cut out.
We have the advantage of it being in Paradise Valley. Of course, last year and this year, it's not, so.
Yep. That's right. Back to Oral Valley. Thank you. Councilmember Hanson, any more on that part?
No, thanks.
All right.
The next department is the municipal court, and it's divided into three different programs: court administration, court collections, and the juvenile court. And some of the major highlights are, there is an IGA with the Supreme Court for their software for $6,100, and they are proposing to do some file scanning and archiving of some of their records to make, to go paperless. That's 5,000. And then there's dues, publications, judicial conferences for the judge for the rest of it.
Councilmember Hanson.
Julie, in the original budget that we got, the line item for wage and salaries was $300,000, but in the budget highlights, it's $374,000. So I was just wondering where that change happened.
One second. Mayor Shlum, Councilman Hanson, I'm sorry, where's the first number you said?
On this sheet.
Oh.
And you have 374, 678?
I have 300,000 on this and 374 on this one.
What page number? I'm sorry for the first one. I'm sorry. Just want to make sure I have the-
93?
93.
Yeah.
Mayor, Councilman Hanson, is that something that we can get back with later?
Oh, sure.
Because find out where the difference is.
No, I think, yeah, the programming, some other things rolled into that.
Well, I think if, on page 93, if we're talking about wages and salaries, $300,000 versus the 374, 678, the 374, 678 includes all the benefits. Okay, thank you.
Included, yeah, additional items. Thank you.
I have 374 on 73.
Yeah, it was the difference-
On 93.
Right. It was-
It just broke out separately.
Correct. Thank you.
We're going to do this.
Thank you much. Anything more on municipal? Thank you, Judge Armstrong. Great job.
This is the administration department, and this department is a big piece of the pie as well, but it has an awful lot of programs in it. As you can see, it is broken out now as opposed to just being one department. It is programs of the town manager, the legal, which includes the prosecutor, as well as the town attorney, as well as public defender fees, the town clerk program, human resources, finance, media relations, economic development, information technology, and operational support, which are those non-departmental costs. All of those programs were incorporated into the administration department and previously. They're now broken out into different programs, but still in, within the administration department.
Mayor, I may want to add that in the line item, media relations, that is also our community affairs function, our intergovernmental function, which has to do with our legislature as well, our legislative monitoring and work there. So it's more than just media relations.
That's a good point. That's been an area of sensitivity with some of the citizens about spending just for what might have been considered just media relations. So would you go over that again? That 159,000, what does that cover?
I have, on slides, I have each one of these programs, I have their own slide for highlights because it was so much. So we'll go through those pretty quickly. Town manager highlights, again, is the strategic plan update for 20,000. The contracts that, this is the third year for the contracts, the Boys and Girls Club, community theater, the food bank, tourism, the league membership for 13,000, the MAG membership for 4,000, and then a contribution to the chamber for the Thanksgiving Day Parade.
Councilmember Dickey.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm, I know I already asked you today, but this is the last year of the three-year contracts for those four entities. And if we're not looking ahead to franchise fees and things like that, we have to kind of come to terms that, you know, some of these things may be vulnerable next year. And so just to put it out there to be prepared, you know, maybe everything will be fine, but, you know, and obviously, I'm not in favor of doing anything this year, but unfortunately, that's the kind of stuff that suffers, and I just wanted to bring that up.
Yep, I think specifically, being specific is, there is not a need to be specific to these contracts or funding a program in Parks and Rec. Everything is, everything is on the table. So, thank you. Councilmember Leger.
Julie, just a quick question for you. Under league membership, that $13,620, is that, is that kind of a, is that an exact figure? Is that a fixed number? And what do we receive from that in terms of services?
Mayor Shlum, Councilman Leger, that's the membership for the town to belong to the Arizona League, yes. That's the membership being, it's a fixed number.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Town clerk is the election, the one election, the bond election, and then transcription of the minutes. And the, it's the council election, which will be in May, the March and May election, and the bond election, which will be in November. Human resources, the most significant piece in that program is obviously our liability insurance at 325,000. We also pay to have our payroll processed. And then the volunteer program is 37,390, and that includes the staffing and all of the supplies for that volunteer program.
So that includes staff payroll?
Yes. Yes, it does.
Or part-time, yep.
Mayor, with your permission, I'll just keep going unless you want me to stop.
Unless I see a hand. My payroll reason is pretty good, but keep missing Councilmember Hanson over there.
This is the finance program within administration. And within that finance program, there is the financial audit contract. The audit is a separate program. The sales tax auditor. There's an accounting program, which is basically the bookkeeping. There's the budget program, the administration of all the finance. We have the customer service representatives. We have the licensing program, which is dog licensing and business licensing. And then we have purchasing. And then we have our special events. So those are all the programs included in the finance.
Mayor, Councilmember Leger.
Julie, on the sales tax auditor contract, would you say we're recovering that cost?
Mayor Shlum, Councilmember Leger, I would say we are not recovering the cost. I've been working with the sales tax auditor, and he's done canvassing of all of the properties in the community that have duplicate addresses, same owner but duplicate addresses, or that have the appearance of having, being a rental. And the majority of them are with, either with a rental, I mean, a property management company, or they don't rent it out. They've signed a thing saying that they don't rent it out. So I think that for the value for what we're paying, you know, it's a very labor-intensive auditing to go through each property owner for 1.6%. And so I don't think that we're going to recover that money back from residential audits. We definitely recover money back, more than $42,000 on his other sales tax audits, but not from the residential audits.
That would be incremental, improve, increase the approved-
Correct. And I'm sorry if I misunderstood your question. I was thinking residential audits, but you were talking about general audits. Yes, I think we've collected 90,000 or, about $90,000, I mean, this year.
That answered my question. It's paying for itself.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Media relations and intergovernmental, that print avenues is 23,000. Census will be participating with some media buy for the census, doing some upgrades to the website. And then meetings with the league, the Fountain Hill School District joint meetings for 3692. Economic development, whoops.
Councilmember Hanson.
Did we talk at the last meeting on those four editions of the avenues and possibly just not mailing them to every home and just having them available in the kiosks?
I remember it was discussed. I don't remember where we ended up.
I think what we, I think Katie was the one that reassured us that we would have those in the kiosk available at various locations where we have the kiosks, but that for the most part, it would be electronic, except for those four editions.
So we're not actually mailing them out, then?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mayor? Yes, Councilmember Leger.
Along the lines of-
Except for the four editions.
Along-
What I'm talking about.
All right, let's clarify. So the four editions are going to be mailed. Is that correct?
That's correct. There'll be four.
How many will be created?
Well, you'll have the electronic one on a monthly basis. And then there's always the link that you can have off the website where you get more regular updates, news updates. I call them fast class, but then, of course, we're still doing in the loop. So that would be the four that are actually going to be printed and mailed out. And then there would be hard copies of the electronic version available for pickup in the kiosk, I believe. And if I'm misstating, I do apologize to Katie for that. She'll probably remind me tomorrow.
This does not include the loop. This is just the-
That's right.
-avenues. And they mail, I think they mail about 12,000 to every household.
Yeah.
Councilmember Cantino.
Thank you, Mayor. With the avenue news, they're not going to be mailed, right? They're going to be in the kiosk?
Quarterly mailed, I believe.
Quarterly mailed, produced monthly.
Okay.
But only four of them would actually be mailed. When they're not being mailed, the hard copies would still be available at the kiosk.
When you do that, are you able to cut your cost by not printing so many when you have them in the kiosk or people not coming in to get them?
I think definitely there's some costs associated with that. In fact, this figure that you see is probably a third of what we would normally spend for that particular program.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
If I may. Recalling from our council retreat, we went from a discussion of not doing print this year to doing them. And I think the rationale for doing them was so we didn't go cold turkey with the public, that we kind of did a transition. And after listening this evening in terms of all the things that we will be doing related to the avenues with the electronic copies and a hard print of the electronic copies in kiosks and so forth and so on, I'd like to suggest that maybe we just reduce that to two print editions a year, which would be kind of in the front end or however Katie feels that we should position those. Because when we had this conversation originally, we didn't have any safety net. And now I'm hearing all these other options. And, for example, if we did the first two editions in the front end of the year, that, to me, would be a six-month transition, and I'm not sure we would need the four editions. So I'd like to suggest we put that on the table. I mean, it's not a major savings, but it's about $16,000. What does everybody else think of that?
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I seem to recall when we had the conversation, we were doing eight or 12 prints. Do you remember? It was eight? And so what we did was we cut it in half because we were concerned with several citizens in town that don't necessarily use the computer and only rely on, it's unfortunate, but they only rely on the mail to get there, and some of them may not get it at the kiosk. So I thought what we were trying to do was do a transition and then possibly next year, reduce it down to maybe one printing or no printing at all, but to do a transition to get everybody to start moving one direction. When we, if I remember right, when we did the, we did a survey, when we had the business vitality, that's not correct, Frank, but you'll correct me, I'm sure. We had that, at the community center, we had a, an open house for all the businesses in town. And of course, the town manager and I got to stand there at our table, and we were polling people as they went by. Would you like to get the avenue news in the mail? Would you like to get an email to you? And if so, would you give us your email address? And it was about 50/50. I would- I would tend to guess what it was when we were there.
Actually, I snooped and saw what the total was, and I think it was very heavily weighted, actually, towards electronic copy.
Was it? So, I think this is a good move, but I'm afraid that if we just go down to two copies, we might shoot ourselves in the foot.
Mayor, if I may, and I don't want to belabor this, it was just simply a suggestion. I think with all the backup we have out there, that having two would be fine, but I certainly could live with four. Is postage included in this twenty-three thousand, six hundred? Okay, thank you.
Thank you much. And again, the idea behind communication like that is to keep the populace informed what's going on and invite them to different events and such, and that's certainly going to continue to be a goal, communication. So, if we don't hit them where they are, or where they're available to see these items, and that's a gap in communication opportunity that we've had in the past, so got to be cautious with reductions there.
Sure.
Councilmember Cantino.
Thank you, Mayor. The website upgrades, is that for Katie Decker's department?
Mayor Schlum, Councilmember Cantino, yes, that would be Katie's.
Katie?
She has responsibility for the website.
Didn't we buy her new software last year? Or this year?
I think, I can't remember. It was.
Mayor.
Yes, town manager did.
Yeah, I can, I respond to that. This particular expenditure has to do with the implementation of a flash element to the website, which would bring more graphics on the page. Instead of seeing one photo there, you'd actually see multiple photos of the community fade in and out, the slideshow. Also, right now, we're working on cleaning up the front of the website. We've received very valuable feedback from our citizens and from all of you, that what they wanted to see is more of a cleaned-up face to it with drop-down menus and things like that. Along the, along the way to, during the year, there will emerge needs or modifications that aren't apparent right now, and so, some of this funding allows us to make those modifications as we go along. It's very important we have a website also, to have some funding available just to do these maintenance items on the website as we go, as we go along in the year. But certainly, a lot of that has to do with the flash element.
Mayor. Councilmember Cantino.
I understood that we, when we bought the software from her talking to us, Katie, sorry, that it was going to be the updated and the most up-to-date version with everything, and we didn't need to spend any more money for a while.
There's, there's not. Mayor, Council, I don't know of a website that does not need maintenance on an annual basis.
No, I'm not.
No matter how advanced the software is. And that's what I think that money pertains to, is the maintenance. If we require that, you know, we just, we get some feedback from citizens that we need an element on the website that just isn't included there right now. This allows us some latitude, wiggle room, to implement that. Obviously, if there isn't a need for that, that money wouldn't be spent, but I believe, and if you look at the detail on that, that a lot of that has to do with the flash element.
Mayor Schlum, Members of the Council, Councilmember Cantino, it also includes adding a survey component. Oh, sorry, that was taken out. Clickable slideshow.
Well, that was the flash.
Okay, and then changing footers for seniors.
Doing what again?
Changing footers for seniors and polling on the website were two other things.
The online survey tool that we have. And we found that valuable already. I think we've, we've tried that out once or twice already. I think the single hauler issue, we tried that on, was that? Yeah, okay.
Lori's putting together a fact book and some marketing pieces for twenty thousand dollars. She's doing, also doing some industry studies, some gaps that we have in the, in the town. Membership with GPEC, our Greater Phoenix Economic Council, is ten thousand dollars. And then she plans on attending some professional conferences for economic development. Information technology, the annual maintenance fees for all of our programs is about ninety-seven thousand dollars. Fifty thousand of that is our new software that we just purchased last year. We also have some software hosting fees, our e-fountain. We pay a monthly fee, I think it's four hundred and fifty dollars, and the code enforcement, we pay a monthly fee. Some new software for economic development for forty-two hundred dollars. And then we have a hundred thousand dollars to upgrade our software that we purchased to either the GIS module or the HR module. So, we put some money in for that in the event that we get to do that.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Julie, on my page, one oh one, actually, information technology, I have software maintenance eighty-seven thousand dollars, not ninety-seven, but I have, right below that, I have equipment maintenance at ten thousand. Did you combine the two?
I did.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Operational support, which is our overhead, which are the things that are really non-departmental that apply to every department. For example, our phone bills, fifty-six thousand dollars. The copier maintenance fees for the big Xerox copier, sixteen thousand. Postage for all of the mail that we send out, sixteen thousand. Our bank fees, our bank charges are eighty-three hundred dollars. Copier supplies for the copier, seventy-nine hundred. And then a contingency of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That contingency amount is there in the event that, number one, something comes up that we don't have budgeted, but number two, that if their revenues don't come in the way we think, then we've got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we know that we won't have to spend. So, that's why that contingency is there. Public Works, and the directors are here to answer any questions about their projects. Again, the Public Works Department is now divided into several programs. There's Public Works Administration. Sorry.
Councilmember Hanson, sorry about that.
There wasn't a slide for legal in there? It was at the tail end of, under Town Manager?
Right. Legal is just the town prosecutor, the public defender, and the town attorney.
Are there, where will there be funds? Are there funds included if there's any litigation settlement?
We do have contingency funds for a litigation settlement, yes, but it wouldn't be in the legal fees. We have it in a contingency over in the capital projects fund.
In capital projects, okay.
Public Works is, again, administration, the capital projects, engineering, open space, stormwater, and traffic.
Vice, former Vice Mayor.
Leger. By the end of the night, we'll probably be on a first-name basis here.
Yeah.
Be a little quicker.
Probably having breakfast. About another hour.
Julie, just a quick question on Public Works. I have a couple of questions on capital projects, but we will get specifically to a drill down on capital projects at the end of your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll just kind of weave that question and things.
Okay. On some of the highlights of Public Works is the open space grounds maintenance, which is medians, that's thirty-four thousand. Our open space infrastructure inspections at our dams and bridges, those inspections are eleven thousand. Electricity for all of our open space is sixteen thousand, five hundred, and that's for the meters in all of our medians. And then the water sewer, which is for the medians as well, is fifty-four thousand. And then miscellaneous engineering fees of seven thousand dollars. And facilities is a division within the Public Works, and that division has programs of administration, community center, fire station, library, museum, facilities, other, which includes the civic center, Kiwanis, other buildings that we maintain, and town hall. And that's five hundred and eighty thousand. Some of the highlights of facilities is broken down by building maintenance for the, all the individual buildings, electricity for the buildings, and the water sewer, utility Planning and zoning is the programs are planning, building safety, code enforcement, and mapping and graphics, and, again, planning, further divided down into current planning, long-range planning, environmental planning. So, there's multiple layers to these programs. Some of the highlights for planning is the census. The town has to pay MAG, twenty-five thousand dollars for the census. The current planning is primarily staff, that's a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. There's recycling bins, ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. Environmental planning and long-range planning, those are the two programs included in the planning.
Vice Mayor.
Julie, if I could talk about the recycling bins, is that a good number, that we're not going to see those fees go up? I mean, we've already heard, I think at the last work study, that the bins were costing us about twelve hundred dollars a month, and they've already increased significantly from when we first started the program, so I'm wondering if it was projected. I don't see.
Mary's here. Start making money using that bank, that bank.
Do the recycle bank. I'll take, I'll take all the credit, credit, you know, because I want.
Mayor and members of the council, we negotiated a contract for the recycling bins with the current vendor, and since that time, what we've had is an escalation in usage, unfortunately or fortunately. So, what we're trying to deal with at this point is trying to get a handle on the usage and where we're going in the future with the recycling program here. So, we've budgeted it based on current usage.
The most recent current usage that we're getting now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just hope that we don't go too far.
It's a moving target.
Yeah, it is. And that's what worries me. Okay, thank you. I'll, who knows? There could be people that are canceling their recycling at home and deciding just to throw it into the town's bin because all, their neighbors and the rest of the community are funding their recycling now, so.
And they're proud to tell us that they are doing just that.
So, yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll probably move past this with discussions on hauling, but just a risk, once you start it, to maintain it, certainly a service that's valued.
This is Recreation Department, and, again, those programs are the Recreation Administration, the Boards and Commissions, which is primarily staff to support those commissions, community events, community support, the special interest programs, sports activities, and youth and teens. Some of the highlights of some of those community events are the Ballet Under the Stars, St. Patrick's Day, Movies in the Park. Those programs are seventy-six thousand dollars. The sports programs are thirty-seven thousand dollars. The In the Loop newsletter is twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty. The youth and teen programs, eleven thousand, and special interest programs, eleven thousand. Parks, we have four parks, Desert Vista, Four Peaks, Fountain Park, and Golden Eagle Park. And some of the highlights on the parks is the building maintenance for all of the buildings are forty-eight thousand. The grounds maintenance is ninety-three thousand. The turf mowing is a hundred and forty-five thousand. And electricity broken out by Fountain Park, which is obviously the biggest, at a hundred and twenty-three thousand, and all the other parks at fifty-seven thousand. And then the water sewer is thirty-eight thousand. And then ninety-eight hundred dollars for miscellaneous repairs for the fountain.
Councilmember Hanson.
Julie, on the summary page, the line item page in the budget, under mowing, landscape maintenance, it's showing zero. Is that one of those weird things that happened with the software? Like, in last year's budget, it was a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, and it's showing zero for this year, or for the next budget?
Which park is that?
It is.
Or which page? Give me which page, you know.
One fifteen.
Where is she at?
It's part of our new volunteer program.
Oh.
Kathy. Part of our new volunteer program, I think.
Yeah.
The volunteer mowers.
Maybe so, yeah.
Thank you for waiting, Mayor, Councilmember Hanson. It's, we've reclassified it, it's now in another account number, another account name. What's it called now?
It's part of the restructuring from our.
Contractual services.
Now, in land maintenance, and as part of the park program.
This might be one of those things that the last meeting, when I just asked if we could get, you know, like, just a sentence clarification on these things, where either it went to a zero, and there were dollar amounts before, you know, just a little blurb like it moved here, or if something has gone up significantly, just another little blurb of, you know, why it went up so much. And that's pretty much throughout the whole thing, if that could be, you know, if we can get something like that before the final adoption.
Mayor. One thing I was talking to Councilmember Hanson about, and probably need to discuss with you, is a possibility of some of these line items that have had a shift because of the way we're budgeting now, or whatever other reason, that we get you an additional page of, or summary of those, those major changes. And I think that's something we could probably produce pretty, pretty quickly for you, and so we'll work to get that to you as quickly as possible.
That'd be great. That would save a lot of time tonight.
Yeah, with this, with this new software, there, there are, I mean, every page, there's about eight or ten on the draft budget. There's got to be eight or ten different classifications now, so, yeah. I mean, it would be, what Councilmember Hanson's asked for would be very much appreciated. Just on this page alone, you can see reclassifications must have changed where at least ten items are now budgeted in.
The dilemma is that you still have to report what you spent in previous years, and that means that that line item continues and it has a big goose egg in it, and that will cause, if you've moved that line item or that expenditure somewhere else, that does, that will cause some confusion, so we'll clarify that for you.
Good, good luck. That would be helpful.
Community Center is, has two programs, Community Center Operations and Senior Services. Community Center Operations is broken out by administration, Boards and Commissions, Event Coordinating, Marketing and Operations. And the major expenditure in that department is the transfer for the debt service payment for the Community Center, that's three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Senior Services has several programs as well. The administration, senior events, the home-delivered meals, and obviously, the marketing membership programs, the transportation, that's the STS program. We had budgeted ninety thousand dollars for that program in the seniors, and the money's still there. You know, we're not final sure yet of how the program's going to look, but the money's still there in the seniors' budget.
Councilmember Leger.
Julie, I have a question for you. Just a clarification, under Senior Services for Marketing, salaries, benefits, supplies and services, could someone expound on that for me, what, what that is, what that consists of?
Sure, hold on.
Mayor, meantime, can I ask a question about the senior, the transportation? Because, Rick, you probably know this, I got an email asking me a specific question about the senior transportation. Is this all still in flux? Because there may be some information that's kind of getting out, and I don't want anybody to be misled.
Sure, there is.
There's a letter that went out.
Yeah, obviously, with the demise of STS, utilizing our volunteers, we can't replace STS, but there, there are some other alternatives, including the use of volunteers, that we're going to be bringing to you, I believe, at our next council meeting, and unveiling that for you. We have also participation of our senior commission chair in that effort as well, and some other folks, and we've been working on that for about a month and a half now, trying to refine that. And it's a work in progress, because we've heard, we've heard, almost every day, we hear something new, that there are some other possibilities that might emerge, and so, it was, I think we were going to present it tonight at one point, and looking at the clock, I'm really glad we didn't do that tonight.
No, that's.
But it is coming.
Thank you.
And I had quite a few calls once the county letter went out.
Sure.
And I'm getting more details, and the reliance upon volunteers to do some of the, to move some of the non-ambulatory people that are extremely special needs are concerns to the family members of those persons currently using STS. So, I'm sure you guys are all aware of what, who's using the service now, but certainly it's an item that we need to. But certainly an item that we need to be on top of quickly.
Mayor, Councilmember Leger, on the marketing for senior services, there's $4,000. And that's actually for, in the loop. It's the seniors' portion of being in the loop.
Thank you.
Sorry for the delay.
No, it's okay. It's just this program.
Getting late.
It's the program budgeting, things just appear differently and.
Yes, exactly.
Kind of why I'm asking a lot of these questions. Thank you.
Law enforcement, there's three programs there, Animal Control, which is through Maricopa County, Incarceration, which is jail prisoner, and then the Patrol, which includes the contract with Maricopa County Sheriff's Office.
Oh, we're not in Senior Services any longer?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just kidding.
I'm just trying to move on.
I thought we were locking up some seniors here. I'm just kidding.
Trying to move on.
Just kidding, trying to stay awake here.
And then Fire and Emergency. There's Administration of that, which includes the contract with Royal Metro, Building Inspection, and Fire Suppression. And that's.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. This is actually a question for Rick, because there's a situation that came up today. And I was just curious as to where we would find that revenue shortfall in our next year's budget, should the fire marshal decide to keep, the state fire marshal, I was talking about.
We're, we're still attempting to make contact with the state, so we, we haven't determined that that shortfall is actually going to occur yet. We hope it doesn't. And we've been in contact with the league as well. But just kind of a recap of that, and there's a reason why we haven't just emailed all this out yet. It's because we're still gathering information on this. But if it is appropriate at this time, the sheriff, the council, there is a concern out there, and it has not solidified yet. So please stay tuned for further information about the possibility that, that there may be some funds cut for not only this fiscal year, but in subsequent years pertaining to our share of the surcharge that is attached to fire insurance. And you may know that when you purchase fire insurance, that there is a portion that goes back to the state and is distributed to municipalities to help, among other things, help contribute to the retirement programs of the firefighters. Well, since we're a contract, we contract with our fire services with Royal Metro, and we don't technically contribute directly to a state retirement pool for public safety individuals, there is a question right now that we're not, we haven't resolved yet as to whether our contribution via our contract with, with Royal Metro qualifies as a contribution to a qualified program, which Royal Metro has. Or does it have to be specifically the state retirement pool? So that's the question that we're trying to resolve. It, there was an attempt to resolve it legislatively through an amendment to that statute. However, latest information that we received is that that amendment was withdrawn, which leaves us still with this question that needs to be answered by the state fire marshal and also the state treasurer. And so we will have information for you in the future. Obviously, if we discover in the future that there is going to be a shortfall in that area, then we will make the necessary adjustments and bring you right up to speed as fast as we can as to how we would suggest to you that we cover that shortfall. But we will cover that shortfall. And so right now, I'm not prepared to say how we would do it. That will take some meetings and some collaboration. The Executive Budget Committee will definitely get back together very quickly to address that.
Thank you, Rick.
That's it for the General Fund. The Street Fund or the HERF Fund has about $1.6 million. And it has programs as well, Administration, Pavement Management, Street Pines, Street Sweeping, Traffic Signals, and Vehicle Maintenance.
Julie, where would that million dollars, that, that risk come into play? The, that can talk to, or?
VLP.
The VLP. Where would that impact us? It'd be in C. Chair?
That would be the General Fund.
That's the General Fund, okay.
Yes. And Director Strobeck said today, and he had a little more information than we had. He mentioned the number of only $450,000, so somewhere there's a formula.
Okay.
You know, we get about a million dollars' worth of vehicle license tax, but apparently there's some formula where they wouldn't take all of it, they would just take some of it.
Mayor.
Yeah, when he said 42%, then I thought, oh, it's probably gonna be like $400,000.
Okay.
The latest information also that we received from the league is that that particular initiative did not have a lot of legs to it right now, so.
You know, I don't think any of those bills are gonna be going anywhere very soon.
If hypothetically, this can happen at any time, I'm learning. I'm used to a 45-day legislature, not a 45-week legislature. So you're always, your guards always have to be up here. I've learned that. And such initiatives, if they were approved and they impacted us to the degree that something like this would, we certainly would all get together very quickly. This would be a very team-oriented approach to answering that kind of a deficit. We would not try to do this by ourselves. And it would take a long, you think tonight's long, that night would really be long.
All right, thank you.
Some of the major expenditures in streets is median maintenance. That's the largest expenditure at $175,000. This is a new expenditure for the Street Fund. It was previously in the General Fund. But because it's median and in the streets, it really is more of a Street Fund expenditure. And the portion of liability insurance, $100,000. And there's the annual debt service payment, this is the last year, for the debt service payment out of the HERF Fund. So the proposal would be, if we go for the bond, that we would ask the voters to approve two different bond issues for $4.5 million. One for $3 million, which would be a general obligation bond, and the other $1.5 million would come out of the HERF, HERF Fund that would replace this one, that's about $136,000, $130,000 a year for about $1.5 million. And then $170,000, which is pretty much the balance in the HERF Fund that would be transferred over for the pavement management program. And $60,000 to the Vehicle Replacement Fund. Our Economic Development Fund, that's the separate excise tax. The major programs there is the skill set workplace, industry sector. She's sharing that cost with the General Fund, between the General Fund and the excise tax fund, and the fact book marketing pieces, and then the downtown holiday lighting in this fund. That's our operating funds. If you want to go over the capital, Mary will come up and deal with the capital projects. Or we're just, you know, we've seen these a couple times before. If the council wants me to just bring up the page and we can, you can talk about them individually, whatever the, however the council wants to go through these.
I was just gonna say, there's, there aren't a whole lot of them. Maybe you just want to go through these. I think it'd be easier.
Okay. The Town Square Avenue of the Fountains, that's part of the development agreement with the property in the Avenue of the Fountains to, for the sidewalks, for $250,000. The Shea Boulevard Climbing Lane, that would be paid for with stimulus funds, some capital improvement fund money, and MAG funds, those are grant funds, and the bike lanes for $2.8 million.
I'm sorry, again, you're budgeting for all expenditures, but not all the money's coming from us. It's coming through us.
Correct, correct. The Shea Boulevard Widening Project, that is grant funds included with capital project funds, $1.6 million.
Majority of, majority of the funds are not ours.
Correct. Do you want the breakdown?
That's 70%, isn't it?
I'll trade places with Mary, because she has the breakdown.
I mean, because our capital budget's gonna be a lot higher than people are used to, but it's because of the expectation or hope that we'll have funds come in that we can use.
Specifically on the Shea Boulevard Widening of the $1,006, $1,120,000 is grants, $480,000 is capital project funds.
Thank you. Shea Boulevard, the same?
Shea Boulevard, the Widening Project. That is, the Climbing Lane is $2,704,000 of that. $1,076 is grants, $1,081 is stimulus funds, and $547,000 is capital project funds.
All right. Are there any that are much less than 70, 75% funded by grants or stimulus?
The bulk of the large capital projects are funded either through grants or stimulus funding. The only large project that's scheduled for next year is the Saguaro Boulevard Mill and Overlay, which would be funded by bond proceeds.
Thank you.
I'm gonna keep going. Do you want me to walk through each of the project areas, or do you want to ask?
Just the, yeah, the highlights of Saguaro now.
Saguaro Boulevard, the Mill and Overlay Project is anticipated to be funded through bond proceeds. There are three sidewalk projects listed.
Mary, isn't that more than Mill and Overlay? Or is that the intense, or it's more than that, isn't it, Tom?
Mayor and council, yes, it is. There's, there's different things that we need to do relative to ADA, as well as future signal conduits, and there's drainage. And there's also some subgrade work that we would need to do in addition to just the Mill and Overlay down in the golf course area.
Okay, thank you.
There are three sidewalk projects included in this one category for a total of $806,843. The bulk of those are funded through capital project funds, and one is funded through grant funding. The traffic signal upgrades are funded.
Yeah, Councilmember Leger.
This was that question I had earlier, I was holding on to. Under the sidewalk projects, as you mentioned, there are three sidewalk projects. Two of the three are pretty much in motion. We've done a lot of work on them. Two of them I view as public safety initiatives, because they're in school zones, in those areas, so forth and so on. However, there's one particular project that grabbed my attention. It's Project S6046. And more specifically, that's the sidewalk project from Fountain Hills Boulevard, on Fountain Hills Boulevard, excuse me, from Shea to Crystal Point. And, you know, I had an opportunity to meet with Tom and Randy to ask some more specific questions about that. And I'd really like to, for us to consider perhaps delaying that project. And there are several reasons for that. There just seems to be, there seem to be so many balls up in the air for funding that. And when you look at '09, it's $100,000. '10, '11, it's $107,000. And then come fiscal year '11, '12, it's 1.5, $3 million. And when I had an opportunity to speak with Randy and Tom to really investigate where that money was gonna come from, there's just, there's just a lot of balls in the air. And there seems to be possible Fed money that's out there and so forth and so on for doing the streets. So then I simply asked the question, does it make sense to invest all this money doing the sidewalks before we do the streets? And I'd like Tom to address that. And my question is, it's proposed here, it's medium, but it just seems after all the activity we have going on, there are possible grants for road, expansion on roads, the Elman Project, there are just so many balls in the air. Should we be designing and planning and putting sidewalks in place? Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Leger, it's a point well taken in that we do have a lot of projects going on. And the money that you're seeing here is for design, and this is a grant project. However, we can request an extension on the grant, and we can hold off on the design for a year and wait and see what happens next year. We'd be happy to do that.
But the notion is, is there any, and I don't want to belabor it, but does it make sense to try to get a little, on more solid ground with respect to what we're gonna be doing with the pavement before we spend so much attention, time, and money on doing the sidewalks first?
Mayor, Councilmember Leger, as we spoke, yes, you typically would be performing the asphalt and curving work and landscape work at the same time you're doing the sidewalk. So on this particular grant, it was, it was a grant for a sidewalk design. And so we saw the money and we got the grant, but, but your point's well taken, as well as stimulus money that we could be looking at. So there's good reasoning here to hold off to see what happens with the stimulus fund or the discretionary funds in which we've, we plan to go after.
I'd like to just suggest that we delay this particular project, this particular sidewalk project. And I think that the priority list is pretty low to begin with, this medium. And I don't see a public safety issue related to having or not having those sidewalks at this point in time. So I put that out for discussion or whatever we need to do to remove it from the budget if my peers feel that that makes any sense.
Thank you. Now, Tom, is that the same item that, I'm not sure, 200, page 278 of the budget, but it states the, in September of '06, town applied for a CM AQ grant? Is that part of the same one? Do we know what percent the grant?
I just need to check the numbers.
Looks like $130,000 this year for design work?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is, Mayor. It's S6046.
Okay. So do we know what, what amount of money is the town would be putting into that project?
Based on what I'm reading here.
The 70, 30?
There's a.
I know, it's a CM AQ.
There's a grant for $300,000, and so there would be.
Oh, I see there, I have that.
At the bottom of that statement, did you see that?
There's a grant for $300,000, but the overall cost is closer to $1.7 million.
That's correct. And so what we would do is, myself and Randy would go after another grant for the construction as well. We would attempt to do that.
Okay.
In the process.
Seems like this is, is this along Fountain Hills Boulevard?
This is Fountain Hills Boulevard from Shea up to.
Crystal Point.
Crystal Point.
Crystal Point.
Correct.
Near, is that the one near the Presbyterian Church?
Yeah, yes.
So the, it's a significant sidewalk project. It'd be great, although there are many improvements we're all hoping to see along Fountain Hills Boulevard proper. Would it be better to do those in conjunction if we're able to secure funds for Fountain Hills Boulevard completion?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. So maybe it does make sense to hold off on this, as long as we can extend the grant?
We can. I believe we can extend the grant for one year.
Okay.
I'm getting the nod, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
So that's $130,000. Good job. I bet it's coming out of our capital budget, but we're, there's not a lot of money going into the capital fund, so.
That should take care of my pay, right?
There you go. All right, thanks, Mary.
The next project is the traffic signal upgrades. And this is a system-wide upgrade of the traffic signals to the TS2 standard. Total cost is $142,400, and it's going to be funded by development fees. There's one drainage project scheduled for next year, and that's the Del Cambray Drainage Project at $86,000. This is, just as an aside, one of the types of projects that might be funded by a stormwater utility. So if we were to proceed down that path, this would be one of those costs that we would identify in our study as a potential project to be funded by a stormwater utility. Currently, the only source of funding that is available is the Capital Improvement Fund.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mary, this particular project has to go in unison with the, you know, the sidewalk that's slated to happen on Del Cambray.
slated to happen on Del Cambray, so you wouldn't do one without doing the other, correct? Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you.
As a matter of fact, it goes under the sidewalk, doesn't it? The new sidewalk that we're constructing, so.
That's correct, I was hoping that Mary wasn't going to convince you to wait, so, for the stormwater, but it, yeah, it goes in conjunction, and it's almost right underneath the sidewalk, so it would really behoove us to move forward with the drainage project. We did go on hold this year.
Well, and I wasn't going to suggest that, Tom, I was just wanting to get it, get, put those two numbers together so I had a clearer picture of what that project's going to cost. Thank you.
The next project is our annual pavement management program, it's budgeted next year at four hundred and fifty-six thousand. There's two components to the funding, there's the one hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars that you saw in the streets division budget as a transfer to capital projects, that's the HERF portion of the funding, and the balance of the funding of the project of two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars is coming from capital projects funds. The next project is the fire station relocation project, it's budgeted a million, four hundred and fifty-six thousand, and the source of funding is anticipated stimulus funds.
Councilmember Dickey?
Thank you, Mary, just wanted to clarify today, I think it can be in tomorrow's Arizona Republic, or it was in today, that, and I think they were covering the, the open house on the design, and they said that the, that the town issued a statement that the funding was not, unless you got the stimulus funding, the funding was not there, and I just wanted to clarify that it is there, and we, you all agreed, and we put it on the budget just in case we do decide to go ahead with it, even if we don't get the stimulus funding, so I wanted to make that statement. Sometimes the paper, a statement like that makes it sound like we're losing all out of money, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Not sure I understand what she said.
We have about eight million dollars in our capital improvement, and we do have the money to do this, should we decide to do it, even if we don't get the stimulus funding. And I just think that was a little bit of a, of a statement that could be misread.
There's funding, there's funding in our bank account to pay for it if we chose to spend more than we want to spend out of our capital improvement plan if we do not get stimulus. Currently, we're going to be around two million, two and a half million, out of our capital improvement plan budget, but I'm, I'm not comfortable going to four million dollars spending out of our capital improvement budget, we need to, we're not, we will have less than five hundred thousand come in this next year, we do not want to diminish our capital improvement plan rapidly.
Mayor, I'm just trying to, I'm not trying to debate this at this time, you know, as far as whether we should go ahead with it if we don't get the stimulus funding, but the idea in the conversation was that it was in the budget, so if we should decide to go ahead with it, even if we don't get the stimulus funding, we do have the funds, and I just wanted to clarify that, because of what the paper said.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
The next project is the alley paving project, and that's the portion from Tower to Panorama, and that's budgeted at a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, and that's totally capital improvement funds. The next project is the continuation of the software integration program, the anticipation is that the likely software modules for next year will either be GIS or HR modules, and that's budgeted a hundred thousand dollars, and that's a transfer from the general fund. The next project is the emergency operations center here at Town Hall, and it's budgeted at eighty thousand dollars. And then finally, there's the contingency budget in the capital improvement program for four hundred thousand dollars.
Mayor? Yep. Councilmember Dickey?
Could someone expound on that?
On the contingency?
Four hundred thousand in contingency in capital? I don't recall coming across that in the past.
Yeah, we typically budget a three point five percent contingency.
Okay.
In the capital projects fund, either for unexpected occurrences during construction, or for other capital-related expenses.
Okay, so for example, if we had an overrun on a project, that would cover that versus setting this aside for a project that's not budgeted, so it's more for overruns?
How could it cover the spending of anticipated grant monies that come in?
Could possibly do that as well.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and that's exactly what I was going to address. I've had this conversation before, but I just want to have the conversation, sure this is public to wear, and it's, some people have come to me and said, you know, what happens if you get a windfall, or you get way more than you anticipated you were going to get from, say, stimulus monies, or some kind of ADOT grant, or, you know? Obviously, we have some very good, worthy projects, and what I would like the public to know, or be assured, is that we have the capabilities to be able to accept that money, knowing that we can move forward with that particular project, might have to budget it for another year, but how do we handle that? How does that, how do we have the funds, and maybe Rick, you can jump in on this one, but how do we have the funds to be able to not turn something away that's going to be beneficial to the community?
Well, we do our, we do our very best to anticipate what revenues we're going to get, but both in terms of what funds we may not realize, and what funds we may get that are in addition to what we anticipated, it is, it's more art than it is science to predict that. We're clearly fine to realize whatever revenue is out there. We hope the economy turns around, and we, we're able to, that our coffers are healthy, but on the expenditure side, we're limited in this state, we have to anticipate every possibility out there, and it's a difficult task, every possible project, we have to plan on spending this money, because you are going to make a commitment tonight as to what we're going to spend. And if we determine, and that's why we have projects in there that are, that are contingent upon our ability to get this grant revenue, because if it isn't there, and we do get the grant revenue, well, guess what, you got to wait another year before you can, you can spend that money. So I, well, somebody once told me, you never do the budget on a sunny day, and so you underestimate revenues, and you overestimate expenditures, but that becomes very critical in this state, where, where I came from before, you can amend the budget three hundred and sixty-five times a year, but here you cannot. You're stuck with that commitment to spend only that amount, so I hope that, that kind of answers it. I hope we get a lot more money than we've counted on, but we certainly will not be able to spend more than we make a commitment to spend.
Thank you, Rick. Speaking of a lot more money, is there anything we need to do, or any word on highway reauthorization, potential funding attached to the federal bill?
Yeah, we have, we have made application through Representative Mitchell's office for federal highway money. These funds become available, I think, on a five-year cycle, and we were able to submit two projects, one for Shea, one for Fountain Hills Boulevard, I think the amount of about twenty million dollars, okay? And we actually, as I emailed you, we have been very fortunate to realize some pro bono work from some folks that are pretty well-connected back in Washington.
Lobbyists?
Well, we don't like to say that, but no.
Isn't that a bad word?
No, actually, they're public relations and government affairs consultants.
Thank you.
That are, that are, no, and they're, they're great, where I, I hope they're successful in helping us, and there has been some discussion about a possible congressional visit, I'll make you aware, if that becomes a tangible possibility.
My question is mainly, is it have to be budgeted? Is this, or is this dollars that are spent on our behalf by another agency?
If, Mayor, council, if we realize twenty million dollars in federal highway funds, those are not projects that we would be able to gear up and do in this coming fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, it would be the following fiscal year before we could put that together.
Thanks.
Unless we hire a fleet of engineers, all right, yeah.
All right.
Quickly, we'll just go over the debt service budgets. Again, the payment for the street bonds, a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, this is the final payment for that, the general obligation bonds, which is one point four million dollars, is paid for through the property tax, and the municipal property corporation bonds are paid through the excise tax of one point four million dollars, and the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District, four hundred thousand dollars. The tax levy anticipated for our next fiscal year is about twenty-one cents, twenty-two cents, compared to last year, which was about twenty cents. And again, that's because of the assessed valuation decreasing, not an increase in the amount of money that we need, we still only need one point four million dollars. We've had two public open houses and a work study, the work study in April, the open houses in January and April, and then a meeting in May, tonight. Tonight, we would anticipate that the council will approve the tentative budget, and then we would adopt the final budget in June, the next meeting in June, and that would allow us enough time to approve the tax levy on June eighteenth. So in summary, all funds are balanced, the councils and strategic goals framed the proposed budget, we have an increase in our budget because we have an increased reliance on outside funding for capital projects, meaning stimulus and grant funds, and we did make service level cuts that were made that affected the infrastructure but had a minimal effect on the citizens. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I appreciate the council's patience going through this transition from general line item budgeting to program budgeting, I know it's been, it's very confusing, we've struggled with it as well, so I really appreciate the council's patience with it, thank you very much.
It is a challenge, it'd be more of a challenge if our budget were going up, I think, the fact that our bottom line's going to be dropping significantly makes it a little more palatable or less concerning, but next year we'll be able to compare apples to apples better, should look forward to. My one comment was just to thank Rick and the team, the staff, for working hard on budget and staying here past eleven o'clock tonight, appreciate it. Councilmember Hanson?
Can I just ask a quick question on the fee schedule? There are some things in here, like the special event permit fees, if we're able to streamline that process, could we possibly consider reducing the fees, especially like for the charitable organizations, you know, for trying to increase special events, and little mini-event type things, it just seems like maybe we could, you know, if it was less staff-intensive, maybe make those a little bit smaller. The same thing with the park fees used for special events, maybe looking, and I don't know at what point we could, you know, kind of fiddle with these fees or not, but I just wanted to kind of throw that out there, to help promote our events.
Very good, I think.
Motion?
You have a question? Who's got the question? Vice Mayor?
I was just going to ask, so we've taken the thirty-five million, three hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy, or six hundred and seventy-two, down to thirty-five million, two hundred and eighty-four, we reduced a hundred thousand out of our budget? Is that what we did, Mary?
Hundred and thirty.
Okay, so with that, I'll move to approve Resolution two thousand nine dash nine sixteen, adopting the maximum amount of the town's fiscal year two thousand nine, two thousand ten tentative budget of thirty-five million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Second? All right, so this is our maximum budget amount?
Mayor, that is correct.
Budget, okay. Any other comments, questions, anyone from the public?
No, Mayor.
Good stuff.
Boy, Frank's still here.
Bob Burns is still, Frank's still here, Rich is still here. I think we're ready for a vote, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Seven, zero.
I wanted to add a couple of items to the agenda tonight, can I add that?
Sure.
Thank you again, staff, council, discussion directions to town manager, correct?
No, I don't have anything reporting.
Some of our requests, anyone have something to ensure we're on top of? All right, good. Call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, anyone from the public? All in favor, aye, aye?
Aye.